Well, um, that for six and we have two select board members, so I guess I
Let's get on the road.
That's open the meeting, yeah. Long list. Are there any adjustments to the agenda at all?
I've got nothing.
Any public comment?
Ask about the derelict properties of Val?
Uh, yeah, there's a property on Ainsworth Road that Mike McGlynn has been concerned about for quite a while. And then I just got a call up towards the end of last week from Russell Richardson about a neighbor of his. And they're basically properties, the two properties are old houses that were abandoned for a long time and then they were sold. And there's people now living on the properties and it's kind of a desperate situation for a mortgage.
Could I be added to that on the way?
Uh, sure. Talking about your neighbor across the room?
Behind me.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, yeah, it's meant to be a general discussion.
I didn't know, but we just get those two on the list.
Well, those are the two people that have made a call, but there are other places in town that fit the bill. And, um, yeah, it's meant to be, I mean, Mike McGlynn has specific issues and we'll hear those first. And then it's just basically trying to figure out what the town can do about this problem. Any other public comment at all? We just started the meeting. Chris isn't coming?
Uh, I don't know.
I haven't heard from him.
I'm trying to go a little bit late. Um, no other hearing, no other public comment?
There was a Ford pickup out there, the lights were on and the door wasn't fully locked and I pushed it and the lights went off, so whoever's
Thank you.
You need to, ooh, I got a jumper pack in the truck, so help me out.
So I guess we'll approve the bills by finish signing them?
Still got this many to go.
Yeah, okay, all right. So we'll sign them after the meeting. So we'll approve them. Um, oh, here's Chris, let him settle down. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the November 22nd?
So
I hear a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. So there's a copy here to be signed and we have to make sure that Robin gets those, that copy when, before she leaves. Um, okay, so it looks like we're ready for the town footage report.
The recordings are still coming in slowly, but they're coming in. They're off today. And basically the only other thing I've been working on is helping Brandy with getting town report ready.
Okay.
Kind of slow right now.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so is any questions at all for Robin? All right. Um, so Brandy, just get ready for the town footage report.
Yeah, so it's been since November 8th, since I've given my charge of reports. So we're going back, starting from November 9th to December 13th today. Payroll, it's within the bills in front of you, totaling $25,302.32. AP was $1,957,091. Easy, that was a little off. $1,957,091 for total expenses. Electronic transfers that came into our checking from the state, um, the pilot payment, which is the building portion, and the library ended up getting an ARPA grant for $2,000 and current use came in electronically. Cash receipts, we did get a check.
So for the building, that's the Fish and Wildlife?
Yes. Yep, for Buck Lake. Um, there's the ARPA grant. So we did end up getting a check from the state of Vermont for the land for the pilot Along with cash receipts, there was library donations, there was copies at cost, dog licenses, land records recording, um, town hall rentals, vault fees, vital records, vehicle registration, and zoning permits. Delinquent taxes were $43,009.55. Today I transferred $24,000 over to the money market. When the check was cut for the school, I had to take $1,898 out of the money market and put it into the checking to clear the check for the school. So things going on with me. So town report, um, I went out for bid on having the town report printed. I've gotten two bids back so far. One was doubled. Um, so I'm gonna, so a couple things. Typically, we have Web Weaver set up our town report and including the town report and postage, it was over $6,000 last year. I can get them printed and mailed for around $2,000. And our wonderful auditor, John Reed, is willing to set the town report up in a PDF file and send it right to wherever I need it to be printed. So we're looking at saving around four grand doing town reports this year.
Sounds good.
Other things, still busy working on the ARPA committee. I did get the LCT and Regional Planning Commission to agree on a date that will be held January 4th at 6:00 PM in the school gym. Masks are required, students have to wear them, anybody that goes has to wear a mask. Also, the school gave us permission to use the gym for town meeting, same rules apply. What else is going on in the office? I have to finish up the Cabot Road Grant, there's not much left.
Okay.
Send it to you and then send that one off and I think that's about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Technically, this is a classroom also of the school. So in the future, I think where the select board is going to be using this room, they're going to be requesting that people wear masks. It's kind of a school, this is a school classroom.
Students' classroom.
And it's also an after-school site for children, so I know that's the first that I'd heard of the rule for using the gym. And I have a feeling that they haven't mentioned that for the select board meetings, but knowing that this is a school classroom, I think that we will be asking people in the future to wear a mask, at least requesting it. Any questions at all for Brandy about?
Brandy, can you tell, can you say if any of that dealing with tax money came from Lefleyham and Southfordbury?
Hmm, I would like the delinquent tax collector to answer that, but no, I have not received any money.
Okay, no, that's fine. I didn't know if you could say that. Okay.
It's public knowledge, it is public knowledge. Any request for delinquencies, I have to supply it or any one of us have to.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any in from them.
But yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda, and we're about 15 minutes ahead, um, so I know that, you know, Mike McGlynn initially asked for the time to meet with the select board, so I'd kind of like to wait until he's here. So, uh, let's see, and Patty
Do you want to jump up, just touch up on the, because I already talked about the ARPA a little bit?
Yeah, we could, we could go to the ARPA committee and then if we still have time, we could go to the town office energy audit. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I kicked a list and, oh, our letter. We haven't, we don't meet until this Thursday. There is a letter I, of request. I don't know if I bounced it to you guys. I think I brought it to the, our board. I emailed it to their board, but yeah, nothing has been, we haven't been able to discuss it yet. There is a due date for the ARPA money request for March 1st. Some of the things that, that other towns, and I brought before the board, the ideas, what they're kicking around, digitizing records, land records, so that any lawyer firm can contact, get on our website and print it out. So I've asked, we've gotten quotes, we're still getting quotes, from digitizing and updating modules for NIMRE, so those flow easier. What else?
Fire department.
What about the fire department?
Did you get anything from them, Matt?
No, that's where our letter, the application, where everybody, I'll make it public once the board has reviewed the application. Very simple, it's just, it says organization slash group, purpose, the money.
Is that for submitting ideas to the committee?
To the board.
Oh, I think it was funding, funding requests.
Yes, exactly, funding request.
Correct. So it'll go before you guys and you get to make the decisions.
Because kind of what I'm thinking, you guys will collect this information and we've kind of got to
Correct, it'll go
I think part of when you're collecting it, make sure whoever's sending it in shows you where in the guidance they feel they fit, kind of would save us and you some time.
That's basically, we have guidelines we have to go on.
Yeah, because that guidance is pretty specific.
Right, so we're the ones that say, does this fit the guideline?
Yeah, okay.
And if it doesn't, it doesn't.
And it saves you a lot of wheel spinning.
All the questions that, that can come up between now and there at the January 4th meeting for, for Kate and Grace to answer questions as far as the ARPA money, so.
I'm going to the town hall. This room's kind of small with the amount of people like that.
Yeah. So
Chairs, I think.
Yeah, there's some chairs there and you're welcome to sit over there. I guess the camera person would like to have kind of a window
He doesn't want a video of the back of someone's head.
Kind of way. But other than that, um
Unless it looks good without hair.
He just wants your face. I have a question. Is, are the land records, that means all the land records are going to be in the 80s?
They recommend going back to the 80s, the 80s, 1980.
Oh, just
And forward.
Yeah, to get it started and then if you have X, then we can go back further than that.
But typically there's not much research back that far, so.
Well, it's fun just to do it. Not all the handwritten. So at the hearing on January 4th, would that be an opportunity for town residents to also
Yeah, that is, that's where the county gym, the school gym, everybody will be notified to come and ask, they're giving a presentation on the ARPA and any questions that they can answer, stuff like, sort of kind of take some pressure off you guys, people being able to come to answer the questions that, that fit the brackets.
And I know that, you know, those are, those are the two entities that have been kind of designated by the state to kind of oversee these funds.
Correct.
I wonder if it would be good for the town to just, we have a list of requests or proposals for the funding, to have them kind of vet that list to let us know if some things might be a little more in a gray area or some things might be cut and dry about, you know, what we could use the funding on. Do you think that would be a good thing to do, to have them vet it also, or because I
I think it's going to be crunch time between now and then. But if we can get the, the letter out by Thursday, if we make a decision that the form is good, you guys like it, you don't need any other details on it, we can put it on the website, we can send it to, for instance, the fire department, the library, the, you know, any
Friends of the, because I've heard from the library, the friends of the elementary school, all those are eligible entities.
Yeah, so, um, yeah.
Okay.
So once that's out, um
I mean, I don't think we need to
I think it'll agree.
Turn the form of the letter, do we?
No, we're just gonna, you know, they're just gonna bring us stuff and we're gonna say yes or no, and if they can write the checks, essentially.
So, um, so is it just for organizations or is it for individuals also, the ARPA money?
I think it's for the, it's for the town. I mean, if somebody, an individual has an idea or a proposal, it can be suggested.
Yep, okay.
You've just got to read the guidance, it's pretty specific guidance, just be careful with this stuff.
You know, I think there's some things in the draft town plan, I think the planning commission has some ideas. So I think it's, you know, any ideas that, that seem valid, I think, and obviously, you know, the committee can take a look at those and see, it doesn't have to be an entity in town.
Because there are certain like high priority things like PPE, which are easy, you know, funding requests like that, or lost monies that people could have gotten, those are things I myself would like to fulfill as quick as possible. I know the library was short money, we've been short money. You know, those are the type of things that are level one, they're easy, they're, because our goal is not to have to pay any of this money back, so we want to make sure we're not in the gray.
Right.
We just want to be just, so we'll hit those high priority, easy to do ones first, what we call low hanging fruit.
So like the OWL, that's going to benefit us here at each meeting, that's stuff that you guys can agree upon to, to get
Right.
Without doing it before the board, before the big, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, I know we've been struggling with how to provide remote access to these meetings. And, and, you know, I think anything that we can get to assist that, and the OWL is a thing that several municipalities are using now. It's a special type of camera, microphone system that can be used through computers so that people, we're trying to figure out a way to access these meetings for people who don't feel comfortable coming in a physical setting. And this tool is, is called an OWL because I guess it sort of looks like an owl, but it's a camera that will, pretty much has a 360 degree view of the room that it's placed in. And then when somebody has a comment or a question, the camera will move and focus on them. So it'll just kind of move around the room, so whoever is taking in the meeting remotely has a sense of who asked the question and can hear the discussion in the room entirely. And then they can also contribute to the meeting if they have a question or a comment. So we, what we're trying to do is figure out a way to have that remote access work both ways, where somebody can also, through a computer, and we're still trying to figure this part out, whether we have a couple of laptops and there's a screen that, you know, might be projected with the people that are attending the meeting remotely, and they're able to see the space where the meeting is happening, so they can feel that there's part of that. It's a little complicated, but it is being done in other municipalities, so it's kind of our goal, to try to give, provide remote access for people.
I kind of put that poor guy out of business when
Not long, actually.
He'll be still videotaping it.
Yeah, because there'll be a recording machine.
True, although the meeting will actually record itself.
And again, talking a little bit with Jim and Leif Goldberg about, you know, we had a meeting with Chuck Batchelder, our rope commissioner, who's now in Florida, we had him on a laptop, we just used the town Zoom account, but we could barely hear him. So there is a way that a laptop and somebody speaking on it can be hooked up somehow and amplified, so they can hear better in the room and so that we can hear them better as if they were in the room. So we're, you know, it's still kind of a work in progress to figure this out. And the OWL device would definitely help that. Of course, then we have to figure out how to use the thing, but, let's see. Anything, any questions at all about the committee? Justin, do you have any comments about your, and Dennis, your own committee too, of the meeting?
No, we only had a chance to meet one.
Yeah, maybe after the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that.
We appreciate it.
I know with the last meeting, yeah, Laura is here. She had a question about whether or not it was a possibility for her to be on the committee. I mean, my feeling is it's up to the committee, I don't know if
You guys feeling you might
I've reached out to them and they were going to discuss it, I think, on Thursday.
On Thursday, okay.
I am wide open to diversity and asking anybody who wants to help out. I don't see a problem with that. I don't know about the board.
I guess we'd love to hear from you guys.
You've got to get everybody's input on these things.
Okay.
I might be a little behind, but what's the committee, I don't know.
Um, yeah, you're way behind.
It's the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, that's giving us the two installments at the 131,000.
Oh, no.
So the committee is, is
131,000 times two.
Right.
It's me the next poll.
This year and next year. To bring ideas to the select board, it's very structured. The federal is giving very strong guidelines. If you spend it wrongly or how, then we have to pay it back.
Okay, I knew about that, I guess I just didn't realize we had a specific committee for it.
Yeah, because what we were just trying to get soliciting, because we have to make the final decisions, the thought was either, instead of a gigantic public meeting, let this committee work out getting that.
Absolutely.
And then there's a kind of an intermediary between the town and the board, then we'll have to make the final decisions.
So if like individuals have, like if I had an idea, I would go to the
Well, you better read the guidance.
Read the guidance. Where's that available?
It's there on the ARPA website.
It's on the ARPA website.
It is, on the LCT they have links.
It's very specific things you can put on board.
Lottery.
Okay.
And it's quite boring and it's not easy to discern what you're supposed to be doing.
Can you give me a question later?
So you're going to want to stay right in the line, be careful.
There will be a public hearing with an opportunity for people from town to, to have ideas, yeah.
Oh, cool, okay.
That's January, you were here
January 4th.
January 4th.
That's six p.m. With Master
In the gym.
Yes.
Any other questions at all for Brandy or any of the other committee members that are here about the ARPA funding? All right. So it is 6:25 and Mike is here and Rita and Russell are here. We could switch back to the discussion of these particular properties and then kind of open it up as a general discussion, just to, you know, and what the town can do about this. So Mike, you are the original person to call and I know that you've been meeting in town before the select board for a while, so I'm going to give you the floor first, whatever you wanted to address tonight, but let's do that first and then we'll move on to some other things. Do you, is your lawyer going to be here?
No, he had a prior commitment, he could not make it.
Okay, all right.
But hopefully, next select board meeting, he'll be available.
Okay.
So quite honestly, he gave me a couple of questions I should pose to the board. The first thing he told me obviously is, pretty much what you people have indicated, I probably shouldn't deal with the individuals involved, which is the information that you guys thought was
Well, judging the character of the people that you're dealing with, yes, for your own safety right now.
So that being said, one of the questions was, this has been going on for two years plus, and we have seen little to no results. I think the board will agree with that.
Yeah.
So the question is, where do we stand right now? I mean, as far as the board is concerned, where do we stand? That's the first question.
Okay.
And dealing with both those properties. So I'll pose that, I hope I get a chance for a follow-up, because there's another question as well.
Sure. So for the Ainsworth Road property, our zoning administrator did send a notice of violation by certified mail. And we were instructed by our lawyer to keep a record of that transaction. So the first letter that we sent, same letter twice, but we sent it twice because the first time, the post office failed to keep the little receipt, they didn't know where it was. So, and at that, that first time the letter was sent, I'm assuming that the property owners did actually take the letter. The second time we sent it, certified mail, they refused to take it. So we got that back. We, Robin photocopied that and sent a copy of the letter plus the proof that the certified letter was sent to the property owners, to our town lawyer, who was to register that non-compliance with the Washington County Court. So it's, I assume it's on a court docket somewhere, that eventually the, the court will take up this act of non-compliance.
What was the, what was the issue?
The issue, well, the issue is, I mean, there are a lot of issues there, but the one issue that we're working on is in the zoning ordinance where, actually, I will read it to you. Basically, where you can't have more than one, and then violations, let's see, one, unlicensed, unregistered vehicle or other junk visible on your property. If you have more than that, you need to put a fence around it. So that's, that's the one issue. There are other issues with that property that I can get into if you want, but, but that's the issue that, that's in our zoning ordinance that we can address with this particular property.
Can you define, define visible?
Uh, well, basically, in the, in the ordinance, let me find that part. It has to be behind a fence or in your backyard, behind a fence, so that from a public drive, what, you can't see.
Public way.
Public way, yeah.
That's a sidewalk or a public street.
Highway.
Yeah, public street or sidewalk or travel, walkway or something.
On page seven, there's another thing in zoning that might, might pertain here, or does. It's section 27, penalty. Violations of the zoning regulation shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $50 per day or to other procedures in accordance with statutes with sections 444 and 4445 of the state regulations.
And that's actually section 445, one, at this point.
Is that something the courts have to impose?
Well, we could impose it. We could, we could impose it.
And it might be in per vehicle, per day.
That's the question.
Yeah.
But my feeling is these people don't have money as it is.
But that doesn't matter.
So how are you gonna, so to back up one bit, we had a call from Chase and Chase, who's an attorney.
No, they are land surveyors.
And they said by the state that they did, the house is considered condemned.
Yeah.
By whom?
By the state.
By the state, okay.
I talked to Chase and Chase about it too, and it's something deep in the rigs to the fact that abandoned property. And what, what's abandoned? And apparently it was abandoned.
It was empty for quite a few years.
I know.
Are the property taxes paid out?
Yep.
So, and there are issues, you know, this house technically has no source of water, has no sewage.
Well, that's one of the reasons why Chase and Chase was calling, is because they were up there to do a survey so they could do a septic. And it just happened that the state guy was there at the same time and said, you shouldn't be here. So Chase and Chase left and they're going to come in and do research in the office.
Okay. So, yeah, just to continue that, there, people are now living in that house full-time and have been for a while. And so there's no septic, there's no sewer, and I think maybe now there are children living there, so there is another option that the town could pursue with an emergency help order. And the question is, with the pandemic, I mean, obviously you can't evict somebody from property that they own. And I don't know, I don't know anything about this process of the emergency help order. But that is one way to get people out of the house.
Do you still have to wait for the court to act on that?
It's a long, it would be a long drawn out process, I assume.
Wouldn't our town health officer have the wherewithal to do that?
Yeah, except that we don't have a town health officer.
So doesn't that fall back to you?
Well, it falls back to the chair, but after tonight, I'm not gonna be the chair anymore, so.
Chicken.
I did do that once with the help of the palace health officer, Jay Copping. He helped me in a situation across from the town office last winter. And basically, it was an emergency help order on the landlord who did comply. This would be much more complicated, I think. And I don't know what the root is and to be honest with you, as someone who didn't really sign up to be a health officer, I don't really wanna get involved.
I did this for thirty-three years and I ain't getting involved. Because my experience with this is even with court orders in your hand and the sheriff, because I've done this many times at the state level. Unless the sheriffs are gonna draw guns and hogtie people, they're just not gonna do that. And we came down to properties occupied for six or seven years with no power, no sewer. And they got a court order in your hand. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't file something, I'm just, I think our expectations need to be what the reality's gonna be. Unless you're ready to have a gun battle or get pretty violent, we might evict these people.
Sometimes, well, what can, it probably is already in effect now, the fifty dollars a day per vehicle goes back to when the notice of violation was, and that builds into a lien.
From the town?
From the town.
The town can put a lien on one of the banks.
So we could build that route with the finding and accumulating it and we could date it from when we sent. I guess the second letter would be the official one that we have proof of.
So a quick, quick question, when you send out that notice of violation and you send out the notice of fine per day, and I agree, I think it's per vehicle. Does the lien holder, are they notified as well so they understand what's going on here? Because that might be a little bit more muscle that you.
Yeah, and in Title twenty-four, chapter one seventeen, four, four, fifty-one, which is referred to in our zoning ordinance, it's just that it's pretty outdated, so the number is different. There's a whole, there's a procedure that the town would need to take in sending a warning notice. There's a chance for the property owner to appeal. And then, yeah, and then basically it is, it is attached as a lien to their property. So if they were ever to sell it, whoever is buying it would basically be acquiring the penalties that they've accumulated.
Is there, is there a mortgage or is there a lien holder?
Yes.
There is.
I don't know that for sure.
No, we're talking on the, we're, we're not talking, we're talking the Asworth Road.
We haven't, we haven't got across the road.
Right, yeah, right.
So, so that's, that's an avenue, a route that the town could take. And I guess probably we should.
Banks do not like to be involved in any liability.
So you said there's a lien holder on this property? And that'd be a bank?
I don't remember seeing one come through the office.
I can't imagine a bank.
I mean, that would.
As I say, how can a bank when somebody, money on a house is condemned?
What I understand is the mother paid for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, so my understanding was, okay, so my understanding is wrong.
So my thought process, Mike, would be that we would have our attorney prepare these documents or signature by whomever needs to sign them to make sure that they're legal. And then we'll just see how it plays out. I kinda know how it's probably gonna play out, but at least we've done what we can do.
The notice of violation would ricochet back and forth quite a few times.
That's okay, we'll do what we're supposed to do.
Before the attorney was happy.
I guess my, my point of this whole thing is for, for two-plus years, this, this has been going on. And it was, you know, everything was gonna be cleaned up before the first snowfall on, both, both properties. That was my understanding. Now, again, I could be wrong, it'll be my first.
That wasn't, that wasn't agreed upon by the property owners. I mean, that's just what we said we would try to, that's.
That's what the town said.
That's what you wanted to have done.
Correct. So I, I guess the problem I have is that the, the people who are occupying the property just keep snubbing their nose at the town, which is all of us. And they, nothing is happening. They're able to just keep getting away with it, getting away with it. So at what point does the town say, all right, we're gonna have to deal with this, we're gonna have to deal with it in a manner that we get some results? I, I guess that's the question, is how do you plan on dealing with it?
I think what we just mentioned would be.
I think it's a good start, I, I, yes.
The problem is, you know, if there's not compliance, how do we deal, deal with it?
We, we can't physically remove them unless the court's order is done. Regardless of what our laws and statutes are, that's the fact.
Have they been assessed any fines up to this point?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we need to do that, I'm more than willing to do that, but through the lawyer.
So the answer is no, but they haven't been assessed.
They don't pay those fines.
So one of the questions that I would, I would look at is that, and I'm gonna only assume this, that there must be some sort of mandatory reporting responsibility by the town if there's child or adult endangerment in some way. So if these, if there are children living in this home and they are without septic, without water, without whatever, then that would be an unsafe environment for those children. And to, for the town to, again, I'm assuming there must be some mandatory requirements, reporting requirements that we're responsible for as a town, that there would be some liability issue if something should happen to those children and we didn't do our due diligence to ensure their safety and their well-being.
Given the fact that you have knowledge of it.
Well, so, so, who, I don't, this is where it gets real dicey, because it's a private home and we can't go on the property without their permission.
Well, maybe that's true, but there is knowledge that there are children living.
Because I don't have that, no, that's what I'm trying to say, how am I gonna acquire that knowledge? And I don't know that select boards, a health officer may be a mandatory reporter. I'm just saying, it, it, you can't obtain that information in an unlawful manner to then file a warrant to go in to file these, you see where I'm getting at with this?
I understand, but I think that there's probably enough information out there that would present itself where someone probably should do a safety visit to the home to ensure the well-being of those children.
So the, the health officer could, based on a complaint, but if, if the homeowner says, no, you can't come in my home, then you've gotta get a search.
Well, don't you think that we're not sitting here saying that we have a complaint, that they don't have any sewer, they don't have any water?
I got you.
What, what more is the tip?
I'm not arguing that I think we shouldn't do something, I'm arguing that we can't go in in an unlawful manner. So I, I don't have firsthand knowledge of this and even for our, our health inspector, whatever we got, if you don't have one to go in, if he says no, you've gotta go before a judge and get a search warrant to go in.
But are these children in school?
I don't know what the children do, see that's, if there's mandatory reporters at the school, do they have knowledge of this?
I'm just saying that there is an obligation as a mandatory reporter, so if there's any.
But who here is a mandatory reporter?
And I can't, I don't think that we can use these, the reason that we don't have a health officer in this town. I, I just see that it could be a liability and negligence issue if something should happen. And, you know, in this particular environment that we're speaking to now and the one that we're going to speak to here and shortly, there is a huge safety issue that is, you know, I, I just feel like the town is, is.
And have you filed complaints about the SRS for the one you know about? Okay.
Well, I also think you gotta remember those are kind of a fine line, because there's a lot of people that live off the grid with no power, no electric, no running water, and that's how they raise their kids. So there's also that aspect you gotta think about, I mean, that's not a requirement to have a child.
That's true, but you also have to know that their safety is being.
I agree with you on that, but you can't just say, okay, well, they don't have running water or this or that. It's really not.
That situation. Yeah, wait.
Isn't there a separate aspect to this that feels like the part that rises to the most concern by the whole community?
So the thing is that when we have asked her, she says that they spend the night across the road and they walk over the next morning. But for us to prove that, I mean, yeah, somebody can say, I followed it, but the other aspect.
You'd have to be surveilling the property almost.
Is that.
That's what Ryan McCall said too.
He has also said that, that not to go there on your own because there's danger. And that's the whole aspect of, of sending either a zoning administrator or a health officer there, that there has been gun points, so.
Yeah, I've been there for when the guns were out. People on FSU in those two properties.
So it sounds like somebody should call a sheriff and have a welfare check done. And they can do that. And why can't the town do it?
Who's gonna sit there? It's a liability for us to go there if they, if he's pulling guns on.
No, I'm saying, why can't the town call the sheriff's department for a welfare check and have that done? Why can't the town do that?
Well, that, what you just said alone, that they pull guns out, that to me is a safety issue. If they're willing to go to that degree to avoid people coming onto their property.
And keep stressful on doing so.
That alone is, is a hazard.
So Rita, the state police have advised the town that nobody from the town, any kind of town official or whatever, deal with these people at all. If there's an issue there, they had requested that we have them do that.
No, and I understand, so they're waiting for a situation to come up. They're not going to just go in and address the fact that.
Right. Again, we can't get, our frustration's the same as yours, we can't get anybody to do anything. The state is aware of this, the sewer, is it the sewer people, Ryan McCall?
Yeah, Ryan McCall.
And they're aware of it and the state's not doing anything, so I just don't know what we can do physically.
Ryan, go ahead, Peter, you've been raising your hand.
So as an abutter for over fifty years, I have a long history. And I don't think whatever you do is gonna change things substantially in terms of their lifestyle, how they, how they live. The question about when, when you were trying to go in there and, and the only way you could get access is with, I think they were gain wardens, armed gain wardens that went in.
We went out with the state police, with the fire department.
Yeah, and, and to, to acknowledge that what's going on, they did clean it up, but now it's right back to where it was. So there, we have no enforcement, we've never had any enforcement in this town. So I, I, it's a conundrum, I don't, I don't really know how you're gonna deal with it. As far as the kids, the first, the first line of, of, is the school. They, they would know if these kids are abused or underfed or whatever.
Maybe in that position, correct.
They would, you would know about that. I haven't heard any, I haven't heard any.
Well, I can tell you something about that.
Well, I'm, let's not, let's not, we're not talking about.
I'm just saying that, that we have, you know, this is, they're, they're not, they're not gonna change. And there's now another party living in this kind of heated Quonset hut or whatever it is. And, and, but they have respected our boundaries to the most part, which it took a while to, to, to get them to. Because when I first got here, they were junking cars on my land and, 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 because it was easier, because it was all leveled off. But we got through all of them, but, you know, I, I had some, you know, I don't know, sympathy, but, you know, you know, understanding of their situation. I mean, and, you know, there, you don't have to go far to find something similar throughout this, well, certainly in the northern tier of the state, you, you can see that.
All the other parts of Woodbury.
Yeah, and, and so I just hope we do it sensibly and properly and particularly look out for the safe, safe, safety of the kids. As far as the junking stuff, that, that can be dealt with. I mean, you can't go in there and have those, those, those cars and there's a ton of tires back there, just a huge number of tires.
Get down back to your place.
Yeah, right along the, the wetland area.
So let me, Michael wanted to know about the property that we're talking about right now also. So I did have a, a long conversation with Ryan McCall. He's the Compliance and Enforcement Officer for the Agency of Natural Resources. And he's been working with the Katon property, you know, that's an active state enforcement process that's going on. And, you know, he's, of course, every time I see him, you know, he said, we're, we're ready to go to litigation on this, on this property. Because he mentioned that there are times where he will meet with the Marie Katon and that she does kind of clean things up again and then it just gets worse again. So he said that, you know, that's, you know, and so, so he would give her the benefit of the doubt.
It's been repetitive.
Yeah, and so he said, you know, I'm, I'm done doing that and that, that property is now in a process of litigation. Again, I don't know what the results will be, but the state is, is involved in that property at this point.
So is it safe to say that the state is dealing with one property and the town is dealing with the other property?
That appears to be what's happening right now, yes. Yeah, the, the Katon property, you know, it's, it's like an unregistered salvage yard. I mean, there's a number of different major issues that, that the state has pointed out to them for, you know, to try to get some type of compliance. So at one point, there were three, three different violations that they were doing with. So basically, I think the main one that they're sticking with is the fact that it's an unregistered salvage yard, that's.
So why is it that one is the state and one is the town when they're both in the township?
Because the, what's happening across the road hasn't quite got as extreme yet, I think. I think that's the main reason.
So what point does that come, when you're allowed one and they got, I did count, they got seven of them over there. So at what point does that meet that threshold?
I don't know, we'd have to ask Ryan McCall that. He, he's aware of what's going on across the road and so far, that's, hasn't become something that, that he's engaged the state on yet. So I know, I think with the state with unregistered vehicles, I think the limit is three, it might be five, I'm not sure. I think it's three.
So we're saying there's on one side of the road, they can have three or five, on the other side, they're only allowed one. So why isn't the town enforcing their one vehicle for the whole town, depending upon what side of the road is on? I mean, that makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Well, I think because the state is involved with one side and not the other, so I'm, I'm fine with letting the state go through it, it's.
So if the state makes, reaches an agreement with them on four or five vehicles, the town's not gonna step in and say you can only have one? Because the town, the town should be the driving force here.
I can't answer that question, I don't.
So if you look around town and you go to houses, there's, there's people that have more, just because you can't see it from Route fourteen, have cars, so if you nip one, you need to get them all, because otherwise it's just repetitive.
And are you ready to hire a full-time compliance officer to do that? Because this guy ain't doing it, he's not doing it.
At one point, the state was going around doing it themselves, because there was a lot of money in salvage, but they didn't have any more. Well, there is quite a bit of money in, in metal again, so things are getting salvaged. You know, talking with Ryan McCall, you know, we like to say that we're the town with the most lakes and ponds. We're also the town with the most hazmat, hazardous waste, junkyard kind of violations that Ryan McCall is dealing with. That's our distinction in the area that he covers, which is Lemoyle, Washington, Paladonia. There's basically seven active sites now that the town, that the state is, is dealing with. And one of them is the Katon property and the Daigle property. And there are others, I'm not gonna mention them tonight in this meeting. So far, the area that Rita and Russell are concerned about is not on their radar. And I think hearing that there's a, somebody living in a Quonset hut on the Katon property, that's another red flag for the state with, with that property, which I don't think that they're aware of right at the moment. So it is a problem in town. And there's really, you know, and as Brandy mentioned, you know, if we wanna go with our one-car thing, you know, in fairness, if we're gonna go after one or two families, we should probably go after everybody. And we'd probably have sixty people here at a meeting if we started doing that. I, personally, I think that the, the zoning ordinance with the one car is maybe a little bit too outdated and maybe we should use the state guideline of three cars, which these properties still have, have a line. But, you know, I just, I just kind of feel like there's pretty much very little that we can do. I mean, we can go through this fine process and.
I mean, that's my opinion, I think we should, with this particular property, we can handle it, let's do the fines, let's do the next step. But if it drags out in the court, there's nothing else we can do. if it drags out in the court, there's nothing else we can do.
It all feels pretty futile to me, but especially with, um, those two particular properties that we've been talking about. So I'd like to give Russell and Rita a chance to, um.
Did you get your second question asked?
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty, pretty well, pretty well addressed.
I'm as frustrated as you are, just before.
Well, I mean, but I, the problem I really have is one side of the road, you can have four, the other side you're allowed one. I mean, that, that in itself speaks volumes of how the town is handling it. Or not handling it.
The town is letting the state handle the, the worst part of it and then we'll deal with, uh, with the other side.
The fact is we are handling it. It's in the court. We can issue the fines, which I think we'll do.
I think that would be a good, a good start to start issuing the fines.
But I think our frustration is still gonna be there is what I'm saying. I think we all understand that.
Moving on.
Okay, so Russell or Rita?
Well, I mean, we're kind of in the same situation. And to sum it up, what we live with is these people moved into the neighborhood and, uh, their intentions were, as you know, like to fix up the house that they bought. And, uh, they moved a camper in roughly about fifty feet away from my back deck. And, uh, and every night, you know, we have to listen to the generator run all night long, cause they live in that camper. We watch them carry in five gallon, uh, propane tanks, cause there's no power, so that's how they heat the propane tanks. And the dog barks all night long and, uh, they're septic, there is not, no septic, as you know. We promised you a port of wet temporary. We just told you what you want here. No water, no power. And, uh, and in this situation, we have a rental property there and that septic system that they put in is roughly maybe twenty feet from our septic, from that, from that, uh, from that well.
Cartesian well.
Cartesian well. And, um, and now what they've done is now, keep, keep in mind, the piece of property that they put this camper on, I think is not much more than forty or fifty feet wide. And now what they've done is they've gone and they've put the structure up. And maybe, Brandon, you may have seen it drive on by.
I've seen that.
Is this on Flat Street?
Yeah, yeah. So what they've done is they've put a big structure up over the top of their camper. They just towered. So when we, we go on our back deck, this is what we're looking at.
Do you get a permit?
It's a permanent.
No permits. It's permanent to the ground, but they got no permits and they're about twenty-five feet, twenty feet away from my, my property line. Now, years ago, Rita and I, we went for a boundary line, um, to, uh, to put up our house and we got turned down. You know, we took it in the chin and redesigned our house and did it the way it was supposed to be. And, uh, I think you guys have power to take that structure down. They need a permit. And, uh, I don't wanna see it left up. It needs to come down till they get a permit. If anything, it's up there.
We have our zoning administrator here.
We'll need to file a notice of violation with these.
Yeah, I found out about this about a week ago and went up and looked and I said, this, this place is just, this is not, this is not habitable.
It is not.
It's neither structured.
And every night, every night, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. I mean, oh, I'm gonna say this. So they have, they have a kid that lives in there. He's roughly maybe thirteen or fourteen years old.
Teenager.
Teenager and I mean, the screaming and the screaming this kid takes, eleven o'clock at night, you can just hear him screaming at him. It's, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, again, it's the same thing. And it's, it's not fair to us. We've invested a lot in our home and, uh, you know, and I, I get it. There's certain way that people live, there's certain way they bring things up, but I shouldn't have to look at it. And, and they're approaching on a property and we feel that structure should come down with no questions asked. They can go for their permit. But meanwhile, we shouldn't have to look at it.
They wouldn't get a permit for, for that.
And you're absolutely right. The property is uninhabitable.
Well, there's another fifty dollar a day fine.
It is dangerous to be living in a camper in the middle of winter.
We said, you know, it's, cause we have a two and a half story home, so we can wash everything they do. They'll put propane tanks in for the furnace.
I believe, uh, the RVs are limited to, uh, hundred and eighty days.
Well, then, then you know that.
This is your, and they have a generator that runs all night long. Now the generator's been running so long, the exhaust system's burned out and it's just all night long, we have to listen to this, all night long.
The other thing, the other thing I would like to add to what you're saying is too, is when these type of situations happens, there's nothing precluding the property owner who's affected by it. By going to the lister and saying, look, my property value has dropped and you need to take this into consideration here. When, when you send out my tax.
I'm a lister too.
Well, you guys could also individually take them to court too.
Well, and we could, but, and you know, we're okay that they, you know, they have a plan to, you know, rebuild the neighborhood, build your house, but they're not doing that. And they literally moved in, in February of last year, they brought the camper in.
Piles of house, piles of house.
I'm sure that you can, you've been up there, you can see it's nothing but a junkyard. And that should, it should not be, like, no one in this town should have to have someone move in next to them and within twelve months have a junkyard. And as he mentioned, wherever the gray water's going, wherever the sewer's going, it's very close to our well. And that is a safety and environmental issue that cannot be, um, disregarded, just because someone likes to live like the way they like to live.
Now, the hundred and eighty day thing, that, that needs to be enforced. If they're only allowed to stay at that motorhome for a hundred and eighty days, then they're done.
They've been in there since February of last year.
Isn't this something that the town can enforce?
We can file the notice of violation, correct?
Yes.
That's about all.
That'll start the.
That'll start the process.
So what I'd like to just add to, um, this entire situation, um, you know, we were going back and forth about what the town can do and what the town can't do. You know, Mike's particular situation, ours, and you mentioned there are other properties. I can think of one just up the road from us that is beginning to quickly become a very similar situation, which if any of you, if any of you have lived in this town for over twenty-something years, you will recall when the pickets were forced to clean up their yard. Okay, so things can be done.
Well, that's all right back there.
But that particular property is starting to be, um, similar to the Dagels and others and the people who are living there came from that end of town and now are moving up to that, our end of town. But what I would like to just say is that we should try to prevent these things from happening to begin with. The particular property that we're speaking of, that property should have been condemned and never, ever been able to, the property owners should have never been able to sell that as a structure that could be lived in.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent, Rita.
Same thing with this one, with, with Mike's property. That is a condemned piece of property and I don't know how it ever got sold to someone to be able to inhabit it. And if we don't, as a town, we need to either set some, some parameters that says if you're, if the property hasn't been lived in in a certain amount of time, if it doesn't have running water or electricity or sewer, whatever, whatever, uh, guidelines we have, then it's condemned property and it can't be sold. To me, that would be a way to try to prevent these things from occurring.
Send a message.
At least then we have something to start with.
I think the state does have something like that, but I haven't found it yet. I heard about it.
It's just ridiculous and it can happen, it can happen to any of our properties.
I mean, that adding to what she said, I spent a substantial amount of money developing that piece of property to the butt set. Just to have these people come in. I mean, I've got the septic design, that's all on file with the town. They got everything there. I guess my question is who in hell would wanna buy that piece of property with the, that existing situation?
It's the same thing here. We have a rental piece of property and, and, uh, we're gonna sell to the people renting it, but once this all happened, they backed down.
And, and our, our home, we, we've lived here for thirty-five years. And we've put a lot of money and, you know, into this property. It's an investment for us. And I agree, if we're gonna be living next to junkyards, then, you know, maybe the town needs to start thinking about doing some reassessing and looking at our tax structure, our property taxes, because I can tell you right now, them living next to us is sure as hell not doing a thing for our property. And it's, it's time that the town do something.
I think the town needs to figure out what it can do and that, that's the big question mark that we've been dealing with.
Well, we know the structure is illegal, no permit. And we can do that. That's a given. That's something that can be taken down.
There's two structures.
Yeah.
And in my case, it's a condemned property. Why in hell are they allowed to be there?
But by whom? This is what I'm trying to get across. We don't condemn properties, nor do we regulate properties that are condemned by someone. That's what I'm getting at. It's like, I, I don't know where we find that information or who's the condemned officer.
How can we become?
Well, it's, it's that we would have to write an ordinance to cover this stuff, which we don't currently have.
And zoning administration.
That's what I'm trying to get across, is we don't have this stuff. It's all good stuff.
But what I'm saying is we're talking about, well, you know, it could go on for six years or sixty years. At some point, the town has to, I mean, the Katon, the Katon property, whatever their last name is, that's been going on for years. You know, I think the town needs to address these things. I mean, we all live in this community, you know, we all, you know, wanna feel comfortable with, and we want people to come in and, you know, we, we have our homes and when we sell them, we wanna be able to know that there's some sense of value and that people are gonna come in and this, all we're doing is turning people away.
So Rita, do you know what happened with the pickets? How, do you know the process that, that, that?
Well, I know that George Ray was quite actively involved in that and from what I understand, because what was happening in that case was there was a fence and the pickets were throwing the trash over on to the Ray's property. If memory serves me correctly, that was one of the issues.
And if you take it to court.
And it was forced to clean it all up, but I believe, I wanna say the town helps fund the cleanup of that.
Yeah, they rented a bike in the trailer. Down by the trailer, didn't trailer to live in. We took, we took care of the old one.
We did that in Katon, considering stuff.
So I'm just thinking, with your situation, Rita and Russell, you know, we have this, um, fund, this Sylvia.
Sylvia Jackson Fund.
Sylvia Jackson Fund. You know, when I met with that older couple that is living in that camper, um, you know, I just, I kind of went away thinking that, you know, they, they got schnuckered in buying that house. Why they ever bought that house, I have no idea.
Well, my point exactly.
Um, and, and who sold it to them? And that should be, I agree, that should have been illegal. They, they shouldn't have been sold that house.
Not that it matters, but, I mean, we offered them five thousand dollars more for that property. We were just gonna rip it down and leave it vacant. And John sold it to them, five, five thousand dollars less.
So. You know, I don't know if there, you know, I didn't realize there was a teenager living there, but you know, just thinking of this older couple, I think, you know, they must be in pretty desperate straits to be there. Um, is there something like, there's an agency called Capstone or council on aging. Is there some way that they can get assistance? So maybe they could get electricity, so they don't have to listen to the generator. I mean, the Sylvia fund, um, you know, maybe the town could use that and, and get them electricity.
I mean, that all sounds well and good, but given our experience with this individual, I'm not speaking mostly to the wife or the, or the younger, the younger gentleman there, that, that would not be an option.
That doesn't help with the water, doesn't help with the septic.
Right, I agree.
Doesn't help with their, with their well being.
And I think that, I'm all for helping people, honestly. Really, I am. But I think that the more that you encourage this, the more they're just gonna continue to do it.
My question to, to, I will add to that is of all these properties we've talked about, and the town has spent substantial money in cleaning up a lot of them, where the hell has that got you? Cause none of those properties now, they're just as bad as they were when you started. So.
And where is that on the, on the budget line?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's not a good return on your money.
But I wasn't aware that the town has spent a lot of money.
The, the town has spent a fair amount of money on cleaning up different properties, just to have them go back to where the hell they are now.
Well, I think the one thing is, they don't feel like anything's wrong with their property. They don't. And they don't have the money, cause otherwise if they had the money, they would put in the septic, they would fix the water. But now that it's some people like living that way.
So I mean, at the end of the day, we have to work within the regulation we have right now.
Right now, the regulation for zoning is if there's a footprint, it's established. Don't need a permit.
So let's deal with the issue with what we have. If there's a need to, I mean, the only I can see is you're gonna have to have a very long and very detailed ordinance to deal with noise, with all this stuff, with very specific, um, structure for, uh, compliance enforcement.
But how do these people, these people have been dealing with it for a year? I've been dealing with mine for two plus years.
I got it, but what do you want, I, I'm not being, I'm saying what, what are we supposed to do? We can't physically go down and take them out of this property. The very best we can do is issue fines. We can take it to court and if, I mean, we have criminal cases, the court's sitting on now for two years. People that committed felonies that they're not trying. Our stuff's way down the list. I've got a DUI case that I got involved in in the fire by, I don't know when it's gonna come.
How many nights we, we laid back with our eyes open, just listening to that goddamn.
Yeah, no, I, I feel for you.
Over and over, every night. You get up.
I just don't know what we're gonna do.
Taking a nap because you're tired. It's all the time. It's all the time.
I think the answer to what you could do has already been, been presented to you. It's, it's illegal, it should come down.
And technically, they're not supposed to be living.
But ultimately, a, a court, a judge has to say that.
Well, I thought you said there's.
What I'm saying is we're gonna write it, but if they say screw you, we're not gonna do it. I'm not going down there to enforce it.
No, I don't.
You gotta go to court.
It's dangerous.
We would have to, that's what I'm trying to get you, is we would have to take it to court and ultimately a judge is gonna have to write that order.
But there may be another solution. If they get it, if there's enough violations of each one. And some of the state violations are more than fifty dollars a day.
Right, right, I got that. What I'm trying to say is if they comply, that's great. We can write the order. I'm going to the end of, what if they say, we're not doing it?
Wait a minute.
It's gotta go to court.
If, if they're not allowed to have the structure because they never got a permit and it's approaching, the town has the power to make them take that down. They have to take it down.
Right, I got that. So we write an order to remove it, but he says, screw you, we're not doing it. Our remedy to that is we take it to court. And then the judge has to remedy it and say, based on your ordinance, and then a court order is written. Then the police can enforce it. We can't get a bulldozer and go down and knock the property. That's what I'm trying to get at. Is if they comply.
We're not asking, I mean, we understand that there is a process to that, but I think that, that, you know, just like, like in Mike's case, and you know, you're gonna start imposing fines on the folks up the road, there is a process and I, I, I guess it's let's not turn our, let's not like, just pretend like it's not happening. And we need to start enforcing where we can enforce things. So that not only we can perhaps discourage the people that are currently here, but discourage other people from coming in. Cause I promise you, it's gonna come to your part of the woods some, at some point. You know, unless you're fortunate enough to own a lot of property and no one can build around you or whatever. But even, even in that, someone, you know, it's, it's, it's just not a good thing. It's just not a good thing for your community. So everyone should be interested in that.
We're having our property surveyed now and we're having that rental property surveyed, all three pieces of property, they all surveyed out. And my survey calls me up and said, well, we're gonna take a break from your property because we had a run-in with them. Apparently they went and found a pin and apparently he went over and just, all hell broke loose. And he said, threatened the guys that are putting the pins and, and threatened to pull all the pins out and.
Each pin is a six hundred dollar fine.
Yes, they're gonna be fined, but who's gonna enforce it?
But that's not a slight word item. We don't enforce bottom boundary line. That's what I'm trying to say. You guys gotta go to court over that.
No, we understand that there are some things that we would have to do on our own, but I think that the fact that they're living in a a mobile home that they're not supposed to be living in, and they're building a structure which they don't have a permit for, definitely goes in the scope of the town.
Absolutely.
And which we said, we're gonna have you file.
Yes.
And also, let's not forget about what Mike also has run into. We have, you know, unregistered vehicles up there. More than one, and they're just crammed everywhere.
One, one scenario that might work is for the, for the violation fines to build up into a lien. And the only way they're gonna get any money out of that place is for somebody to buy it and for the town to say, oh, well, those liens will be, we won't, we won't force those. If this person, if somebody buys it, they're out of there.
Thought about that offering.
That, that's one, one method that might, might work.
But I think at the end, I think we should just instruct the zoning officer to do, prepare whatever documents.
You, you can build up forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so let's do what we gotta do and see what happens.
And start assessing the fines.
I think so.
Yep.
I mean, that's what we have in our toolbox. We don't have a lot of tools in the toolbox, but that's what we have. Anyone disagree?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's the way to go.
Is this something that's gonna happen relatively soon?
It should happen as soon as Bob can get it done.
I, I wish I'd known about it before. Really, that's.
Cause your situation's the first I've heard of it.
That's sad. That's sad. That's just not right.
So we'll have our zoning administrator, um.
Can you probably do that and report back to us at the next meeting where we're at with it?
Uh, yes, uh, I think the attorney will work off, probably compile.
Yeah, just run it all through the attorney to make sure everything's legal, that's all.
Cause man, if there's even, if there's anything.
Right, cause when it ends up in court, it all better be right.
I mean, we can assume that it will end up in court.
Oh, it's gonna end up in court.
That we do.
That's why have the attorney prepare the paperwork and you'll just sign it.
But the, 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 the fine clock keeps ticking every day. And it can build up to a twenty, forty thousand dollar lien pretty fast.
Well, there might be, there might be a limit and that's, our town lawyer can let us know that. I know that some of these things where you have fines, there's a limit on how high it can go. Um, I don't know if that's true for this or not.
So the other question I, I posed to you on, on all these properties I'm hearing, there's one thing that hasn't been addressed is who is gonna go on the property and articulate how many vehicles is on these property and how is that gonna be done?
Our zoning administrator can drive by and take a look.
That's where video comes in.
Something to it. You could drive by. I wouldn't. Something to it, you could drive by, I wouldn't stop at the property.
I guess I don't.
I wouldn't, because, man, I'd come back, and it wouldn't be nice.
What I don't know is how you have to articulate each vehicle, do you have to do it by VIN number? I don't know, or do you just have to show it? Because I don't know the answer to that.
I think the, when I was talking with our town lawyer about the Ainsworth Road property, I basically just supplied him with photographs.
And that was sufficient?
Yeah.
Good, good, that's much easier than.
And you can probably tell which cars are not driving by.
Is it possible to, is it possible to get them to cease any further construction on what they're doing? Because like you said, if they say no, we're gonna have to look at that for a while. So, is there any way we can get them to stop doing what they're doing? Or are they just gonna go?
And talk to our town lawyer about it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll talk to the lawyer, but again, I always go to that extreme, if they just say, screw you, get off my property and keep building.
Well, they're going in because that's their behavior, I mean, you know, there's no expectation here really that, you know, sending them a letter and fining them is probably gonna prevent them from not doing what they're doing, but it's a start in the process.
It looks like they're building something out of pallets.
They are.
That'll be their addition, actually, that'll be their TV room.
You think that part of it is that you're probably, they're probably doing that to help with the snow load on the camper.
Yeah.
It's very, it's a very unsafe situation.
Yeah, the structure over the camper, I mean, I can understand why they're doing that, it's kind of, it's a practicality, they've had a blue tarp over it last winter.
Yeah.
And it probably didn't, probably leaked, and it's probably leaking now, so this, they're basically, it's just a roof over the camper to keep the snow and rain out.
Yep.
So, it's a very practical thing to do, if you're living there.
But you gotta get a permit just to build a five-foot doghouse in Woodbury.
But there's a lot of properties in Woodbury that never got permits, and it's not gonna happen or show on the radar until we have another reappraisal.
But in this instance, we'll get the stuff filed and see what happens.
Well, I'm just really concerned.
This situation is illegal, they're encroaching, they're supposed to get a permit for this, just like everybody else's, but they didn't.
And there's, there is a safety issue, I mean, honestly, it's just the thought that something could happen.
Because if you have firsthand knowledge of a child that's in harm, you can call social services, that's what you could do.
Yeah, poor kid, Jesus Christ.
Because if you don't have that firsthand knowledge, is what I'm saying, if a person has the firsthand knowledge, the one that should be filing the report.
So, is there any communication between the town and the school system as far as children that are in some of these properties, is there, or is it everybody has?
That's a total between the school and the homeowner, or the child, the children.
Privacy issue too.
We're not, we're not, as a select board, not given those sensitive data, that is between, what's his view, and the homeowner, and the family.
We got involved in one of those, Mike, with one of those kids.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it was really bad, really bad, and then the school was just like, well, there's their side, and there's your side, and.
There is also an agency within the state that deals with children in unsafe situations, I can't think of the name of it right off the top of my head.
DCF. Well, and it's not just children too, but vulnerable adults.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if there are people here that have firsthand knowledge of what's going on, they should be filing those reports as soon as possible.
Okay, hang me down.
So, so we'll have our zoning administrator address the property up on Flat Street, and we'll start imposing fines on both places, I guess, if there's non-compliance with the notice of violation on Flat Street.
Well, Flat Street, we'll probably have to do the notice first, and then if they don't comply, but the other place, we can start the fines.
And there is a.
Start the fines, or it should already be started.
Get them ripping.
It goes back.
And there's definitely a, there's a, look at the, look at the state statute four, four, five, one, there's a whole process that we would need to notify them first that we are gonna be imposing fines, so you're welcome to take this if you'd like, but that kind of, and our lawyer should be aware of that too, so I would definitely, in both situations, work under the guidance of the town lawyer, like you did before.
Because if there's anything that's not exactly right, they're gonna.
That's why the lawyer needs to do it.
And you know, we do have a junk ordinance that we kind of put together.
Never did anything with it.
And of course, pandemic hit, and we did post on the website, and there were comments that were made, kind of some in favor, and some.
Some again.
Some saying, oh, you know, people should be able to do with their property whatever they please, but that's another route, that thing is sort of sitting on the shelf, and we could dust it off and go through the process of establishing that ordinance, it would address a number of the issues that we've been talking about tonight, mostly related to junk, cars and trash, et cetera, tires, that's something that we could go through the process of establishing that ordinance in town.
Isn't that already in place? Like, you mentioned, you can only have one unregistered vehicle.
That's in our zoning.
Well, there's a little bit of it in the zone, that's what the problem, the zoning is old.
Old, it's old.
So, it's very antiquated, so the remedies are very few.
The only reference to junk is the unregistered vehicles.
Unregistered cars.
That's it.
There's no noise ordinance, without the generator, there's nothing on, and it defers all septic stuff, I believe, to the state.
No, yeah.
The trouble with ordinances, the trouble with our zoning, is a safety program, if there's no enforcement, it's not worth a shit.
So, that was the same comment I was gonna make, I, I, we never had this, a hearing on this proposal, because it never went anywhere, but my opinion, if you're gonna have an ordinance, I guess you're gonna need to pay an enforcement officer, because you can't expect this board to be that enforcement officer, I can tell you, this board's already got way too much to do, so I'm not opposed to the junk ordinance, but it needs to attach to it the funding for a paid enforcement officer.
But that's a select board's thing, is to present that budget that has the finances for the enforcement.
First, we have to get the ordinance, I don't disagree, but I think we all agree that we shouldn't be creating a bunch of ordinances and there's no enforcement.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I share all your frustration, I mean, I wish I could just say, oh, just do this, it'll be easy, but none of it's gonna be easy.
You'd at least have to have a constable.
And the enforcement is the hardest part.
Because to enforce this stuff takes, I mean, like, like, I've been in court a number of times on this type of stuff, all you gotta have is one piece of paper out of order, all things tossed.
Yeah, but if it doesn't get started.
Correct, but that's what I'm saying, so paying somebody, you make sure they got the right paperwork, that the lawyer's dealt with it all from minute one, you can't expect someone to run over there and do it a little bit, and then they mess it up, and then five steps down the road, the court tosses it, that's why the paid enforcement officer position.
Well, and I think that that brings up just a good point too, that there is a real true cost to all of this, and not just to us as the property owner or Mike, but to the entire town, because, you know, now we're talking about an enforcement officer, talking about legal fees, you know, going to court, I mean, this is, this is real.
That's what it's, yeah.
It's expensive.
It's expensive.
It's expensive, we just dealt with a road issue that costs a lot of money.
They cost us a ton of money.
And the people who don't wanna comply totally understand that.
Yep.
And they understand how that works in their benefit.
Yep, of course, because I'm not opposed to spending the money and doing it, it's just it's gonna cost money.
But it's gonna cost us.
I got the same situation behind my house.
The guy down the road from my house, the guy shoots at people.
I mean, he's got, he's got a foundation up there with full garbage, got an old trailer up there that's, shouldn't even be lived in, and they got people in and out of there, it's ridiculous.
You see, so it is on every corner of the town.
Oh, it's all over, it's everywhere.
I don't think that's, yeah, I don't think that it's a question of, of, it doesn't exist.
It goes on, we're going to, a couple times here, people burning piles of trash, three o'clock in the morning, we show up, there's a big pile of trash, so it's a lot of problems, and I always report those to the air quality, and they usually do something with it.
So, can the select board move on?
Is there anything? One more point.
Sure.
You mentioned mobile homes or campers or whatever, they don't wanna be lived in for.
Hundred, hundred eighty.
And that's in our zoning ordinance.
Right, that's in the zoning ordinance.
So, maybe I'll check on the Andrew Williams, old house.
Yeah, they've got camper there.
They got one down there that's been there quite some time.
Yeah.
And Mike, speaking with Ryan McCall, he mentioned that camper also, so that's a state.
Ryan McCall is the state enforcement officer for.
He was, he spoke to that person in that camper, and was told by the person that it would be moved, but it's still there, and I don't think Ryan knows that, I'm gonna let him know that in an email tomorrow morning, so we'll see what happens.
The owner also told the delinquent tax collector that he's gonna sell it, so that's why he hasn't paid taxes for four years, so.
And that's, that's another thing, when you got something like that, that is literally in sight of the town office, how does that allow to continue? I mean, that's right, it's almost like slapping you guys in the face, saying, hey, I'm here, you guys are doing nothing about it.
Well, you know, the place up on East Hill Bliss Road where the people were murdered and the buildings were burned, the state police knew about, I mean, we all knew about that for years, and the state police didn't do anything.
But that doesn't, but now you're shifting the thing, the state police.
After the murder.
But that's what, that's my point too, is that, you know, there's nothing that we can really do, and law enforcement will have to come in, so basically, it's not until something happens.
That's true.
That they come in, and you know, that's, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate for, you know, everyone.
The problem with I see is, you have a person that doesn't pay their taxes for four years, so why do I wanna pay my taxes? What, I mean, are you gonna enforce it if I don't? I mean, how do you, how do you regulate that?
Well, what is the?
That's the delinquent tax.
Unfortunately, that's not a select board thing. No, I understand that, but maybe the select board could give the delinquent tax collector a little input.
Because that's an elected position.
Actually, it's an elected position, and the select board really.
We don't have oversight over.
I understand.
We can, I agree, I don't know what the policy is.
You guys are the forefathers of this town, at this point, so your, your.
Well, but the problem also, just to make sure everybody stands it with elected positions, we can't instruct them to do anything.
I understand that.
I think your point is that it erodes public trust in the whole system.
Yeah, absolutely.
People are allowed to cloud the.
Yeah, agree.
Right, one year seems like a awful long time.
When you call the state police and it takes them an hour to show up, and it's an emergency situation, you know, yeah, it does, there's, it's, you kind of have a hopeless situation, I mean, you really can't depend on anybody to, for that, so.
Unless it's domestic violence, then they're there, because it's a grant.
So, what, what's a question?
So, you're gonna use that word.
A good, good point was brought up is, what is the structure for delinquent taxes? At what point, how many years do they go before it goes to taxes?
Why don't you?
So, that's a question for Ron Wells, so the, the town is who elected him, so the town has the right to ask for him, the young gentleman, where he can ask.
You all could give him direction on that, as the people that elected him.
Same thing with, with the zoning administrator.
But does it, does that change from tax collector, from delinquent tax collector to delinquent, or is there a fix?
I don't know the answer to that.
I asked wrong about it, because that was my concern with, and he's, everybody's different, basically.
You get, when you're elected, you get to make your own rules for delinquents.
There's no oversight except by the board.
Mine was three years, done, you can't pay a cent, it's gone. Ron, he's more lenient.
It's all over.
So, I think if you guys talk to him and share your concern with Ron.
But if a resident wants to get a copy of the delinquent taxes and how many years they've been, we can go to the town.
I think, but he can get that for you, that's a public record.
That would be interesting.
That's a public record.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Has Harvard Police come before you and tried to?
Yes.
Yes, we tried to initiate a contract with them, and we were pretty much set to do it.
We were close to having it happen.
And then they had a number of their patrolmen resign.
They lost a bunch of people, when their select board opted not to refill the position, so they backed out.
Well, they had military commitments or something, didn't they?
But the other, the flip side, it was the select board didn't fill some of the positions, so they didn't have the force, talking to Aaron, the force was not large enough to do any coverage for us.
We were all set to start an initial contract with them. And Washington County Sheriff's Department, you know, they're understaffed, they basically will catch you speeding, and that's about it.
One, one hour a week.
So. And we knew what hour that was.
Yeah. So, yeah, frustrating, because again, I've sat at drunks fighting with us in accident scenes, or people burning piles of trash for all this other property, and the police won't show up. The police come, and no, they're too busy, okay, well, we're gonna leave, I guess, so we share your frustrations in all of this, it's just, we have zero police protection when we're out at the street in the middle of the night, zero.
You know, we had the state police come after that shooting up on East Hill, and their advice to the town was basically to get these people to move out of town, and let it be somebody at some other town's problem.
Be awesome.
Look for that, look, it works out for you.
So, can we, can the select board move on?
Does that satisfy your need for now?
Sure. It's frustrating, right?
I'm frustrated as you are.
And it's getting worse. Yeah, it's all, yeah.
The level of wallace that just continues to grow.
That's what Ryan calls them, it's all over the state, and it's just, and it's kind of, for some people, it's kind of desperate times, and we're seeing, even with the opioid epidemic, or this poverty, you know, it's pretty, a lot of people that are in pretty desperate straits.
But you gotta be careful, saying that, you have to be careful with what you're saying, is, you know, some of these people aren't, I mean, you wanna say they're, but they really are just not nice people.
Right.
And I know you'd say that, but that's the fact of the matter.
Yeah.
I think if you're gonna live in a community, you have a responsibility to that community, regardless of whether you're dirt poor, or you're the richest man on the podium pole, you know, you have a responsibility to your, to your community to live and be responsible and good stewards of your community.
And be a contributor, not an detractor.
That, that, I agree with that a hundred percent, but what do you do with the people who don't feel that way, who just don't care?
Well, I'd be curious to find a community that doesn't have these kinds of problems and figure out what they're doing so that they don't have it.
I don't think you'll find a community that doesn't have these types of problems.
I've worked all over the state, they're everywhere.
Well, other states.
They're gated, they're gated communities.
You've got gated communities, you can't put it down.
Okay, okay, does it move on?
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay. So, um, Patty has been waiting in that factory. Let's move on to the cemetery commission proposal. Come on in Patty. Take a seat.
I'm happy to hear.
You're gonna want, you're gonna sit there?
Yeah, I'm gonna hear you.
So can you give us a background on this proposal and, um, I mean, we, we have copies everywhere, but.
Yeah, I do, I do bring.
Just kind of wanted to.
So I've been, um, researching how other towns deal with their cemetery commission and, um, I've learned that, um, I've, I've always spoken with Worcester and Callis that, um, they have a full-time sexton, well, not full-time, a hired sexton and he does, uh, like all the work that's not happening in our cemetery. See, I go to other towns, I look at their cemeteries and all the stones are nice and it looks really nice and then Woodbury, not so nice, like broken stones, you know, tilted stones and, um, so they look terrible and it, that's, you know, the obligation of the cemetery commission to see that they, the cemetery is going to decay. So I called this guy, uh, Joe Mandan and, um, he's called, goes by Kirk Yard Services. He comes super highly recommended from the, uh, other towns. And he went out and looked at our five cemeteries and, um, I, did I send you like a quote? Yeah. So what we take to fix all the cemeteries, all the stones, uh, it's like thirty thousand dollars. He doesn't need to do that like all in one year. So I was proposing a, um, twenty thousand dollar budget. Seven thousand goes to the person mowing. We're kind of stuck in a, I don't know, four years. Kirk Yard Services would take over mowing at that point, so we would be paying them, but, um, you know, so he, he would, uh, after seven thousand, that would be thirteen thousand going towards cleaning up our cemeteries and, you know, so the total cost is close to thirty. And I, like the other towns I talked to, like Worcester has a twenty thousand dollar budget with one cemetery. We have five cemeteries that are spread out all over town. So, um, and I kind of got stuck in his position, his chair. I don't know anything about cemeteries except I like to visit them and I didn't get like a handbook on like what I'm supposed to do, so I'm kind of leaning it. And people call me and ask me questions. I'm like, I don't know, like you can try calling Richard, he might ask, you know. It seemed like Richard and Sheila take all their, their cards close to their chest and didn't really share what like the cemetery commission's supposed to do. And so I was putting out flags. I'm good at that. But that's about it.
So do you think this twenty thousand dollars, would that be a yearly amount or would it, could it eventually, um, become smaller?
It could probably come small, you know, depends, excuse me?
Once we catch up with the repairs.
Yeah. But, um.
And some of that we're already paying with the mowing contracts, so it's not gonna be.
Seven thousand, seven thousand. Does that cover both the town properties then?
It does. So we'd have to bid our own mowing eventually, yeah.
Correct.
So one question I have is this, I know, you know, like the library trustees requested a, an increase in their budget of two thousand dollars. This is significantly more than, is this something that we should vote on at town meeting?
It would be a total article. It always is a total article, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, cause either you're gonna stick it in the budget or you have it voted on as a separate item.
Right, yeah. I mean, going from seven thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, I would kind of want this to be something that would be voted on at town meeting where it's.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how long the budget's been seven thousand dollars. I don't ever remember.
Forever.
Cause, cause right now there's none of these services taking place, correct? Stone repair, maintenance of the cemetery. And that should be something that's being spent on that.
No, no one's, pretty much it's mowing. I have to pick up the trash, like the mowing guy doesn't even do that. So I have to like lift that big blue bucket into my truck and hopefully someone's at the garage to help me unload it.
Cause hence the problem of finding, all here, do all this stuff.
Is that the only quote that you got? Was the one quote?
He's the only person I know who does this and he does all the town and.
But that's probably adequate to put a budget together.
Well, it doesn't go in there. Doesn't, doesn't the town have a, a, um?
But we would have to go to bid if the voters approve it.
We'd have to bid it no matter what, but we have to get approval for it.
First we gotta get approval. So I think it's okay, it's adequate for that purpose.
He, I mean, we could hire him just to do like five thousand dollars a year, but you know, as the years go on, we're never gonna catch up to have like really nice cemeteries in town.
Right. I mean, I can, I can actually help you out with that if you want. I know a lot of people that do that kind of work, being in the business of it and.
Uh huh.
I could, I could go get, I mean, if you want.
Get some more bids, yeah. But if you wanna throw a number in, I think the number is good, we'll just.
But it's gotta, we gotta put it to the town.
Yeah.
So can you, Patty, can you broaden that just a little bit? Um, on the quote docs, as far as him, um, taking care of any burial? He'll redo the maps. The maps are very sketchy.
Oh, yeah.
Um, at the town office that some are marked, some are not marked.
I think, I think they're beyond sketchy.
I was trying to be nice.
Having tried to deal with these already, um, they, they basically, like at least for white, white work. We've done some work. They, we have no idea.
So he would take control over redoing all the maps?
Right, so he does, he would do all the paperwork involved with burial. He would do the plot sales, like people would go to him. He would update the maps, uh, and card files every year and, um.
So, and in the, in the purchasing policy, um, you know, we could put it out to bid, but we don't have to necessarily pick the lowest bidder. It would depend on the qualities of the, of the bid quote, you know, um, and this person sounds like they would do pretty much everything, so, um, but we would still have to go, we would still have to.
What was that money in here?
You have to have two bids.
Yep.
Right, right. Or you, or you go out to bid if you only get one, then it's, you could pick that guy.
Yep.
And, um, he's a go-getter, just to throw that in there.
You what?
I know him and he's a go-getter, yeah.
You know Joe, you know, you know Joe Mandan?
He bought our sugar bush and he did a phenomenal job of like redoing the whole building, like he did amazing work down there in like less than a year. We saw his transition of what we had and it was pretty amazing.
He's been really nice to deal with, like, you know, prompt, like call me back and came out and, you know, did bids, which went each cemetery. Uh, I have a more itemized thing, like how many stones he would fix, um, like bucklay, you know, the fence there is like.
Right, but what, I'm surprised we have no budget for this now. I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable to have a budget for this. And even if we proposed it and put it in the, the town budget, because I was unaware that we had no budget for repair of cemeteries.
No, we don't have, we basically have a budget for the mowing.
We have a maintenance one for the mowing.
Well, I mean, I guess for me, I still would feel better if, um, it was the town residents approved this, um, cause it is kind of a significant jump, I mean, a jump from what it has been, um, it would be less sweat on eyebrows if people objected to it.
Yeah, that's how I thought it would be. I mean, it lived in last year's town report.
As long as you write up a little something to put in the town report of what it's, what's the money's for. But I certainly don't object to fixing something. Oh, Robin.
Patty, one question. On his breakdown here, he's got a full burial for six hundred dollars.
That's.
But then he also has dig a green burial for eleven hundred dollars. So does that mean for that one burial, it's gonna be seventeen hundred dollars?
No, 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 no. Green burial is something, um, the cemetery commission, um, still needs to adjust. It's something we're interested in, haven't done in Woodbury. And again, it's like Callis had the first green burial a couple of years ago and.
So what is a green burial?
It's just, he's jumping home.
Yeah, there's no casket, there's no box.
No, you can have a box. It, it just, it just, you're doing it personally, where, where, on your land or whatever, and it doesn't have to even be in a cemetery.
Okay.
You can, you can, you can, you know, Doug DeGosiers is, is really up on this and he's, he encourages it, but he just said, it's gotta be deeper than two feet.
Yeah, that's why you want more money is a deep hole.
Yeah. But in Callis, so they had their first green burial and then they opened up part of the cemetery and they sold forty, like they had forty lots and they sold them all for green burial.
In Montclair, is it?
Montclair.
Yeah. And Worcester's in the process of doing the same thing.
So we'll have this on the town.
Yeah, we'll put it on there. Just, if you could write something up.
Sure.
About it, just so the questions would be answered. But I'm in favor, it's a good idea.
So is that like the same thing, um, that you write up, like this year the cemetery commission?
Yeah, just put it in your, I would put it in your cemetery commission report.
Regular report.
So here's what our funding request is and why we're requesting it, what it's gonna do.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
That's it?
Wow.
Okay, um, town office energy audit. Um, do you want me to give a little background on, or do you? Happy to give.
You can do this spiel on the walkthrough.
Okay. Do you want me to do the spiel on the walkthrough? Okay, so, um, uh, this summer, actually it was early this fall, yeah, it was this fall. We contacted Efficiency Vermont to do, um, what's called a walkthrough assessment of different town buildings. The town office was one, the town hall, the town garage, um, I think that was, I think that was it. So, and basically that was free to the town, um, and the person that did the assessment, um, made recommendations, um, for the different buildings, um, and, you know, the next step usually is to, um, you know, for the town to agree, and we're focusing on the town office at this point, to have an actual audit, energy audit done of, um, the building. I, I had that done to my house many years ago and, um, the Efficiency Vermont has a list of contractors that, um, will do these audits. They come and they do some tests on the building, um, and then they come back with, um, recommendations for, um, addressing different problems with the, with the building. And it would be up to the town to, um, we could do it all at once, we could pick and choose. We could choose, um, what would be done and then the contractor would come and do the work. In, in the case of my house, there was a test that was done, um, it's like a big fan, it's something about drawing to there or whatever. So they do a test before they do the work, they do a test after they do the work and depending on the improvement, um, from this test, in, in the case of my home, um, Efficiency Vermont helped pay for the bill. I don't know if they still do that or not.
They're still in there.
I think they still do.
For insulation, weather stripping.
Yeah, certain.
Heat pumps, things like that.
So this would be having a professional contractor come through and, and scrutinize the building much more closely than the walkthrough assessment. And then coming back with proposals to the town for, um, tightening up the town office. And so what we would, um, Randy has been contacting different contractors on that list, getting us since, there's like a two hundred dollar fee for them to come and do the test. And then the, um, you know, the money that would be spent on, um, following the recommendations of the contractor, that would be again on the town's dime. Um, and we would be figuring out what, whether we wanted to do it all at once or whether we wanted to just fix the windows or, you know, whatever, whatever is recommended.
There's no state or federal monies for that?
There is, there is, uh, while Efficiency Vermont, the money that you're getting reimbursed for is coming from the state.
Right, right, I mean, more.
There, there might be more, I mean, um.
The first thing they make you do is this audit for a couple hundred bucks. But they don't pay for that, they'll pay for parts of your upgrades that you need.
Yeah, and we can explore what monies are.
Does a building qualify for historical preservation funds?
That I don't know.
Yeah, it's an old schoolhouse.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Um, the windows, yeah. It's, it's single paint, there's no double, nothing.
Those have been changed out already anyway. Some of that can be a sticky wicket.
Yeah, we could get into trouble with some of the modifications made to the building.
Cause like the original windows are gone, they've shrunk them down and this.
Right. We have it left in there.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
No, it's worthwhile, we can pursue it. Worth pursuing.
Well, I think it's a good idea with the energy audit.
Yeah.
A hundred bucks.
Quick side note, uh, sure. Thanks to the work of Norm Mecklen and Larry Eldred, this school is one of the most energy efficient schools in the state.
And I think we should do that with the rest of the building we have for that.
Yeah, we gotta keep the work, work. It's wrecking them for, for the effort.
We are looking at ways of fixing up the town hall so that, um, it's usable year round, um, and so eventually that would be on the docket for.
And that must qualify for historical preservation funds.
Well, the problem with qualifying for historical funds is, um, you have to do it the way.
The way they want it done, which is really possible.
So like changing out the window, you know, those horrible windows in the town hall, we would have to live with those.
Right.
Um, we would have to come up with a solution which is not as good as putting the windows in there for, so it's kind of a mixed bag with the historical.
In my, my experience has been stay, stay away because some of the features they want you to keep go against what you're actually trying to do. I had a lady in Newport, they spent three million dollars renovating a building and then you walked up, it was twenty below zero and they had this aluminum window from the fifties and it literally had frost on the inside. You could scrape it. She's sitting in front of it like this and they gave you money, but they made to keep that window, for example.
I, I had the same experience when I was part of Grace with the old firehouse in Hardwood, but that was on the historical register and we had gotten some funding to fix up the building, but we wanted to change out the windows because they were equally as horrible as the town hall windows. And we had to do it a certain way and it really didn't count a whole lot. Um, so, so.
So we'd have to weigh that is my view. You just have to see if, if the, they're gonna give you a hundred bucks, but it's gonna cost you two hundred bucks to meet their requirement, you know.
The town office is not on the historical register, so, um, we might wanna leave it that way. I don't know. Um, but the town hall is, as is the school. So two hundred dollars for an audit and then we'll see what, um.
We need a motion for that. I'll make a motion, make the two hundred dollar audit.
So, I was in favor. If she would say anyone would discussion first.
We discussed it.
Okay, uh, let's see. So town meeting, um, I'm just bringing this up just so that, um, they're kind of looking into what's gonna happen for town meeting. Um, you know, I think most of us would really like to have a town meeting where people get together. But the pandemic is getting worse, um, so, um, and I know I, I got in contact with, uh, VLCT about what, you know, just kind of getting a sense of what the state is thinking about with town meetings. You know, last year we weren't able to have one, we went on the Australian ballot instead. So this year so far, um, there hasn't been any direction from the state, but, uh, Carl Landy or the lawyer from the VLCT that I, um, I haven't actually spoken with, but we did exchange emails. He mentioned that this is something that the legislature will be addressing as soon as they're in session at the beginning of the year. And that he anticipates that they'll have some direction for municipalities, um, within the first or second week of January. So just kind of wait and see. I think one of the things that we're concerned about is if, um, and last year we were able, usually if you, a town switches from a town meeting, uh, where decisions are made from the floor, um, to an Australian ballot, that takes, uh, um, the town body to decide that. So it would require a town meeting to decide it. Um, last year the legislature, uh, gave municipalities the, um, um, allow the select board to make that decision of whether, um, to use Australian ballot and, and.
Well, then they made it for us because they could only fit ten people in the room. They really wasn't a choice.
They funded it. They funded it.
I think funded, yeah. We funded all the expenses.
So in this circumstance, it looks like until they change the law, which they may do, we're kind of stuck with the live meeting, but they may change it. Which is gonna be weird because we'll be sending our town report out probably about the time there. To the printers, you know, usually goes to the printers, you get it in the middle of February.
That's the big, the big question.
It'll be a little weird.
You know, so, and it's, so do, if we don't prepare for an Australian ballot and, and that's what appears to be the right thing to do, um, you know, we need to start preparing for that now.
Well, it only took, it took a month.
Took a month.
Not even a month. It took like two weeks for us to get El Brown to do ballots and, and they mailed it.
Okay.
As long as, as we can't actually do an Australian ballot vote unless they change the law.
Exactly, exactly.
Which would happen.
We should just drag our feet a little bit, getting it, getting the report set up.
So the, the town report, it's gonna be no different. I mean, we're gonna set it up.
We'll just set it up, just like we did last year with the warning. That's what we did last year because we didn't know this was gonna happen when it started.
And then if we do happen to go Australian ballot, or they tell us that.
We could. They're not even gonna mandate it, we could.
Then the ballots would have to be printed and they would mail it out from there and it, it took like two and a half weeks. It was very turnaround. It's just an expense the town didn't budget for.
The other option, just a second, Mike. The other option is that we could postpone a town meeting to, say, summertime or something like that.
That gets tough. We need our budget's approved before doing it.
Right.
So, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, the only question I have is, I, I know last year we did the Australian ballot. We had somewhere three hundred plus. We had a substantial, uh, increase over the, I wanna say it was double, maybe even three times to turn out.
At least double, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess that should be factored in because it gives those people who wouldn't ordinarily have the opportunity to attend town meeting to cast a ballot, which is a very important thing. Now, that being said, I also realize the fact of being able to sit down and have a debate is a very important thing. But, you know, weighing everything, I, I think it's, it's very important, the fact that you can get three hundred and somewhat people to cast a ballot opposed to a hundred and somewhat people casting a ballot. And I, and I think that needs to be figured into the equation on how you make your decision.
Right. For sure, we would have to wait for the legislature to do something.
Unless it's on our agenda for this town meeting, for a town vote to make a decision to go Australian ballot. For either elections like Hardwood has, elections are Australian ballot, but their town meeting is in person.
I think all their funding articles are all Australian ballot too. That's the way a lot of towns are. They have a town meeting, but you don't really do anything at it, you just discuss things.
I know, like speaking on a personal level, I have been to a town meeting since I had kids because there's no school that day, so I, you know, I can't expect my kids to sit through a town meeting, um.
Some, some do, some don't sit either.
I don't think I would. You would not want my kids to.
They'll shorten up the meeting if the speaker's.
So I, I think there's a great value to actually having a town meeting in person, but the Australian ba- ballot also, there's a huge value to, I don't know if there's a way that the two could both happen.
That's what I would love.
You gotta do either or. It's either or.
It's either or, it's a nice, it's a statue.
Like has either or established.
Which it would be great for the people, you know, Jim's on crutches. He doesn't wanna come into, to the town, you know, for talking.
Yeah, but it would sting to lose that because I do think it's great to have the, the person.
Cause what you wouldn't want is a floor vote and then you gotta wait to count the, the paper ballots before you can know what happened.
So if you go Australian ballot, you can still have that meeting on, it's what, the Thursday night before?
The pre-town meeting.
The pre-town meeting.
You can still have that with Australian.
The caucus, town caucus, yeah.
Yeah. But what we'd have to do, if the town wants to make that a permanent change, we'd have to. we'd have to put it as an agenda item on this town meeting, however it occurs, whether it's live or a paper ballot. And we could change to that if that's what people wanna do.
Ideally, it would be nice to be able to have a town meeting where we could discuss, especially different issues that are up for a townwide vote, where they could be discussed, but no decision would be made in the meeting, it would be made by Australian ballot. And you know, the ideal for this year would be able to, would be to do that. And we do have permission to use the gym for something like that. And then also have, have a remote access. I mean, if we could get this thing together where we could actually include people. I mean, there are a number of people that would like to attend these meetings, let's say town meeting, but due to the pandemic, they, they're afraid to do that, they're. So how do we make a meeting like that accessible to those folks also? You know, to me, it's, it does seem like having some kind of gathering to discuss our issues. Cause there is one issue that I'm gonna bring up here that I would really love to have a townwide discussion of. And that's something that we can try to figure out, but it sounds like maybe we might wanna, oh, what, again?
I think we just drag our feet a little bit.
Just wait, see what happens, yeah.
But I think, I, I don't know if people's put an article in, but it's a real sticky wicket because other towns that have done it turns into a real battle. But that might have softened because they've had a year of ballot voting.
The other thing I have.
I know Calis tried it a number of years ago and went back and forth and passed. I know a lot of other towns have, so I.
I know a lot of towns that have done it, just Australian ballot, the whole town meeting part of it is kind of, people just don't participate, so it becomes, you know, much, much more.
The meetings keep getting smaller and smaller and more participation is better.
I mean, after the arena, like I would really hate to lose the town meeting. I think that's something that brings the whole town together and we need like more of that in the community. But it also really sticks for those people who have a community there and therefore don't vote. I just completely forgot.
I think too.
Sure, it's important though.
Probably what the town meeting means, we have 120, 130 people deciding.
We're 108 last time.
Right, for everybody.
So that's, you know.
Still pretty bad that only 300 vote when they mailed the ballots to everybody. That was a little bit of a number that stuck out to me. 900 and some voters, I mean, you're privileged to vote, how hard is it to fill out a ballot and put it in the mail?
700, so you get 50.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's pretty bad.
50%, that's pretty good.
No, no, but you, you would think if it was important, it would.
I just think about all the people that can't get the day off work. And all my patients that I see that are homebound and have a lot of opinions but can't get out of their house and that's the pretty time of the year.
Well, I know the town, live town meeting's been going away the.
And I agree with what she just said, is I think when you've got people who are elderly, who are very apprehensive about going out, whether or not we, we. The pandemic's not gonna come to a quick halt like that. So I, I think it's important that, that these elderly people have the opportunity to sit down and cast a ballot where in a lot of instances, they wouldn't attend town, a town meeting. And again, that being said, I, I do understand the importance of the actual town meeting and getting together. And I think you could accomplish that with a, with a well-advertised town caucus to discuss your, discuss issues prior to the vote. The Australian ballot.
Again, prior to this, most places didn't mail ballots, you had to still go to a voting place and vote. That would be probably how it would go.
I think that would be ideal to do that.
But someone, someone's gonna need to propose a language, I don't have language for that, how you change what the town does.
Well, there's, I think VLCT.
VLCT does have some.
Well, maybe we should put that as an agenda item on our next meeting.
Okay, and we'll get some more.
That way people could come and bring input. Sounds like everyone in this room thinks it would be a good idea to put on the ballot as a, or let the voters decide regardless of how this year's meeting comes out.
But something for the future, yeah. So, I can start working towards. I put this on the agenda to start this discussion and a good start, so we'll keep it on and.
It sounds like I, good input.
Any other questions about, or thoughts about town meeting and Australian ballot? Good, okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Woodbury Elementary School. And I just, in the select board meeting, you know, Randy had asked about this special meeting on January 4th and I think you also asked about town meeting. So I just, I, I mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, I just wanted people to be clear that if we're going to be having a town meeting in the gym, we have to go by the precautions that the school has in place. Which at this point is wearing masks. So we'll probably have a couple bouncers at the door with free masks to hand out if.
But it's a sticky wicked issue because I've always wondered what happens at a, at a meeting where you have to let all the public in. If they refuse to wear a mask, you're gonna violate statute, I always wonder how that works. And I'll wear the mask, I'm just saying, I, I.
I'm not sure that's true.
I don't know the answer to that.
If we have remote access, that would.
I don't know if it's been adjudicated, I just wonder, if someone says, I wanna attend this meeting and you say you can't come in, you're actually violating their rights.
But if you want a meeting that you have to wear a mask, it's just warned that way.
Yeah, I suppose, I don't know, I just asked you the question. To me, as long as everyone can attend that wants to attend, I'm good with that.
Well, that's where having a remote option would be helpful if people, you know, there are people that can't wear masks for different reasons. So, you know, if, if we can provide an option for those people to attend remotely, that would be the way to go, I guess. So again, we're trying to figure that out for any of the town committee, commission meetings and for these larger meetings too. And then another thing that I did wanna bring up about the Woodbury Elementary School. When we were working on the present lease that we have for the school last, earlier this year, the school board asked us to, again, to consider having a discussion within the town about the ownership of the school, passing that the ownership of the school and the grounds to the school district, the union school district. And we, in, in those lease discussions, the Woodbury committee did promise to bring that up before the town. Again, you know, it could be, there's strong feelings on either side. But what I would like to have the town do is to begin a discussion of transferring the ownership to the union school district. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just feel that the town should have this discussion. And the school district has reasons, it would, it would make things less complicated. It was a pretty complicated process.
And the law did change, correct, that they, if, if we do this, they would have to sell us back the building if they stopped using it as a school.
Right, they stopped using it.
That's different than we made the decision to rent to the school, that was something new last year.
Yeah, well, no, actually, that was, when, when we did the merger, we decided, we did agree on a lease. And that was a three-year lease for that.
No, no, I understand that, but when we made that decision, I believe they didn't have the requirement if they closed the school to sell us back the building for a dollar.
It was actually part of the.
It was, okay, all right.
So as Paul was mentioning, if, if, you know, if we were to transfer the ownership to the union school district and they stopped using the Woodbury School as a school, then the town would have the first option to regain ownership of the school for a dollar.
Cause the fear was you sell it to the district for a dollar and then two years later they sell it for half a million dollars to someone else who keeps the money.
So, and I'm pretty sure all of that language is still in place. Why can't the lease agreement, there was a lot of effort put into that with Norm and Patrick Flood, Norm Metten and Patrick Flood. Why can't the lease agreement just be continued as written?
It could, it could.
I mean, I think we're kind of making things a little more, this is, that was a very clear document. It took time. And the ownership of the, of the school was, remains part of the town. I mean, and, and I don't know why we have to mess with it. I, I think we should just leave it as it is, I think it's a good document.
Didn't that have to do with the desirability of the OSSU keeping Woodbury open for them to have? There was something along those lines.
It makes the.
Wasn't there, I, I'm trying to reach back to it, cause I know you had some, my husband had some opinions about this, I'm trying to remember. But there was something about the desirability to, for the OSSU to have the ownership of that building in maybe slanting it toward keeping the school open.
I, that sounds familiar to me, so, but I don't know stuff about it.
I don't, I don't think that's the condition at the moment, I think it's more that, you know, if they had ownership, they would feel. You know, Anne's on the, the school district board, what are your thoughts, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm happy to hear what others have to say because I'm relatively new to town and I'm new to the school board, so I don't know a lot of the historical background. But I can say that in my experience so far working with the school district, so to be clear, I sit on the OSSUED board, which is the elementary school board. But I'm the vice chair, so I also sit on the supervisory union board with all of the other reps from all the other schools.
The executive board, right.
The executive board. So I kind of see what's happening from both levels and, you know, I think that the district, like any fear that the district is gonna close our school, any, any fear that the district is gonna try to take things away from our school, in everything that I've seen is the opposite. Like the district is looking out for the best interest of everyone and is trying to find ways to save money for each of its constituent schools and to make things more cohesive and more equitable for all of the staff and all of the children. So in my opinion, I think it would be Woodbury actually to show that we're interested in participating in that reciprocal relationship with the district.
So here, here's the, inter-family at this.
Your dispute must be interesting at dinner, that give up.
We just talked to her last night, too.
There's no reason that, that is, that cannot happen and it continues to happen. I mean, I, I, it, it's really about the ownership of the school. And, and, and particularly if, if, if the student population dropped to 30 or whatever and there was a, a drastic need to, to merge our, our kids into another school. I think, I think we're, I think we're fine with what we're doing. And the, and, and as far as the, the, the old Southwest Union Elementary School District. Whatever the letters are. They're, they're, they're going to have to share anyway. I mean, I know, I talked to Larry and he's really keen on, I mean, it was interesting at that meeting we had in the school. And he was dead set against the merger and then he realizes he's now in charge of all the janitorial staff around, around the whole, the whole OS, Orley Southwest. And he, he said it's terrific because now all of those janitorial staff are, are being coordinated and they can be moved around or they can work with each other and it really makes a difference.
And it's saving the district and the town taxpayers money.
And I, and I don't know why that can't continue to happen, I mean, there's nothing, you know, for. The, the, the lease agreement was really just to safeguard the, the school in case it closed. And, and I, if, if, if it was up to the union, the, to, to, to engineer that sale and stuff, I, I would, I would, I would be sus- suspect of that because I just think that should be a, a town, a town decision and, and we should have a. Well, the only sale that they would initiate, I mean, if we did give over the school to the district, the only, I mean, the town would have the first option to buy it back, so they wouldn't be, you know, and that would be only if the school. But it's complicated because say a third party comes in and offers a lot of money for that building.
They can't sell it.
They can't do that.
They have to sell it.
That's written down.
And I'm not advocating for position either way, I just, it's a weird.
I think that that's a really critical point and if we are clear on that part of the agreement and there's a strong sort of legal underpinning to our position of the town to be able to maintain this facility because I think that the school and the library are the places where our town can get together, right? I mean, it's the only place we have to gather. So it's an incredibly important asset for our town and I think that it should be looked at very carefully how we do this.
It's spelled out in the, in the present lease.
Yeah.
It is.
So as long as our, so as long as our ability to maintain the property is protected, I don't see any reason to not move in concert with the district, you know, as far as facilities go.
You know, I would like the town to have the same discussion that we're having right now.
To me, the voters would need, voters would need to vote on it because it was a pretty resounding, don't sell it, last time.
We asked for a show of hands and it was pretty, pretty clear. Pretty clear, yeah. So, and they, they would like something, they would like a, a town meeting vote to.
Who's they?
The school district, the supervisory union.
So are you bringing this today, Michael, because of that ask from the district?
Yeah, well, because I promised to bring this up when we were working on the lease.
Which lease?
The present lease.
The present lease.
The current one, it sounds like.
So Norman Patrick and, Norman Patrick and I worked for many months.
Yeah, I know you did.
To get that lease, the way it is, and I think it is a, it's a good, it's a good document, yeah. But while we were having that discussion, we were, you know, part of it was that, is that the union school district, you know, other people from other towns were just feeling like Woodbury didn't trust them. And I think there was an element of truth to that. We, you know, we didn't wanna give up that school for, in the merger. And so there was a, a level of distrust and, and they're kind of telling us, you know, you could trust us. They're, they're sort of wanting that in a way. So I would just love to have this be a discussion amongst town residents with maybe even a formal vote on whether the town should keep the lease and, and keep, remain owners of the school and school grounds, or whether we should pass it on to the district. With the understanding, of course, that it was.
There's a lot of history that should be brought up.
Can I say a thing?
Sure. I mean, I've been, I was on the both boards, the OSSU and the Asian, and the Woodburies for a lot, a lot of years. I think at the end of the day, what you have to remember, now that it's OSSU and you have Hardwood voting, Greed's Road voting, all these towns, Woodbury is the elephant in the room. We're the most expensive school.
We are not actually, we are not the most expensive school.
But what I'm saying is, if you look at the, at the kids. They're gonna, they're gonna vote, they're gonna cut somewhere. So can they, can you move 30 kids easier than you could move? So my, my concern is if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna give, let them have it, which I don't think you should, make sure that there's a stipulation in there that they don't close it now as a school, but they use it for offices or school offices.
There is a, there is a stipulation.
Or they give it to the OSSU.
Yeah, there is a stipulation, it can't, it has to, if it's not gonna be a school where children come to to be educated, it, it can't just become the OSSU office building, that, that wouldn't happen.
What? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, what's the main benefit to Woodbury that's being stated for if we were to sell it to them?
Well, it wouldn't cost us. It would be, so right now the insurance is kind of, the town pays for it and the school reimburses us. So there's bits and pieces that the town covers, like a double protection because it's our building.
Sure.
And our land.
For a landlord essentially.
Right, if, there wouldn't be that or, and there wouldn't be an expenses for maintenance that the town now covers because it is our school.
Okay.
So I hear Brandy's saying that there would be a savings to the town, but there's also a complicated logistical arrangement here in which, you know.
Including this building.
Including this building and the library.
And the wetland.
I mean, it's, 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 it's very complicated to manage and maintain these various scenarios of ownership and maintenance and who's in charge of what and who's paying for what from both the district and the town, as far as I understand, perspective.
So the transfer would simplify it?
The transfer, I think, would simplify those logistics, but it would also, well, it would do a couple of things. I think it would simplify the logistics, it would demonstrate to the district that we, that we as a town are coming to the table in, in a spirit of trust. Cause I think if we're showing our kind of arms length, like, ah, we don't know, like, we don't really trust the district to take care of our school, then the district is gonna feel that and respond. I mean, and I'm not, that's not a threat, that's not like a ultimatum, but it's just like the way the interactions are proceeding. I can see that if Woodbury comes to the table in trust and, and good faith, then the district will continue to respond that way.
Have the other schools and the districts given enough their schools? Have the other schools in the districts given enough their schools?
We're, we're like the only, we're the only town in the state, pretty much. I think there might be one other, there might be one other town. So we're kind of an outlier in this whole, um, thing. And it does create some complications for, for-
And really, I mean, I will say this. If in Woodbury, we've, our desired outcome is to keep our school operating as a school, work leaning into working with the district is the way to achieve that outcome. That's what I was saying.
And, you know, as far as the building, you know, and for the expense for the school district, we have a, an old building, it's over a hundred years old, but it's really, it was built, you know, they didn't, don't build buildings like that anymore. And the work that Larry Eldred has done on that building, that building is in great shape. And when you hear him complain about the Hardwick Elementary School or they view, they're sinking a lot of money into repairing those schools, which are, um, so we're, we're kind of golden here. Um, we aren't at a big expense to the school district. There are a lot of younger couples in town that have children that are gonna be in that school. I don't see it being going down to like thirty people in, in the near future. And we have a very unique niche here with the land and landscape around it that, that the school district is taking advantage of.
Yeah, what is the benefit to them, was my question, like, why would the OSSU care to own?
Why don't we have them come and answer that question? Cause I, I don't feel comfortable in answering that for them.
That's a great question.
Cause that's the one, that's the one little building block that's missing in this whole conversation. Was why would they?
To, to kind of be free of the different complications and confusions. I think that's basically, so they, they can feel free to, to really invest in the school themselves. That's my understanding.
Right, because they don't have ownership. So, you know, for them to invest significant resources, staff, you know, we're talking about building an outdoor classroom for the school, which would also benefit the Woodbury community. We could potentially go to the OSSU and say, can you contribute? I'm not saying that, you know, we should, but in situations where we have facilities improvements to our campus, we could be asking the district for support and they would probably be more likely to give it if they had ownership of this school and the, you know, the property, whatever three and a half acre property that surrounds it. Um, I would also say, based on my experience having a child in this school and sitting on the PTO and, you know, being pretty involved in this school community, that what Michael was saying about our school actually being increasingly attractive within the entire district is absolutely true. We now, in this year, have two or three families of Hardwick, Hardwick families who are sending their children to Woodbury.
What is enrollment here?
That was my next question, I can't believe we have to-
We're, don't hold me on the exact number, um, we're-
High forties.
Yeah, we're like forty-eight, yeah, just shy of fifty. And each year for the last three years that my child has been attending school here, enrollment has been going up.
I think Joel and Calder's class is like the biggest class there's ever been, right? Or like-
Well, in the recent history, yeah.
Hundred and twenty kids here when I got here in ninety-one.
Right, and that's why you built this.
That's why this was built.
That's right.
Exactly, and we, and-
It was busting at the seams back then.
You know, I'm coming to this with deep respect for those of you who have been here and done this a lot longer than I have. But what I see honestly among my contemporaries, Peter's son Alex moved back here from the city, I see a, a new wave of back to the land families who are looking for a meaningful rural experience for their children. And Woodbury Schools and our district can offer that. And there's no reason we can't get back to a hundred and twenty enrollment in this town if we have the vision to do it and if we have the trust and collaboration and, and will to do that.
Protect properties and not trash them. I just wanted to bring your point around. I've called that one enough.
I'm talking about old problems.
So, yeah, so this was on the agenda just to begin.
Good conversation, though.
Yeah, this is great.
Thank you.
And I must say, I, I think this has to be carefully looked at from a town standpoint.
I agree.
You know, these, these properties, you know, all, all of this, it, it, it's, it's not easy. Uh, we're unique in terms of what we have and, um, I just, I'm not dead set against it, but I thought the lease agreement was, was well done and it protects us.
It does.
And whatever it has to do, we have to do to placate the, the union, um, we should look at it, but in the meantime, we should really study and, and examine all the moving parts. And I don't think it's gonna happen overnight, this is gonna take some time.
The, the question I have on the lease agreement, which I don't even pretend to be familiar with, is I understand it was several individuals that worked on it a considerable amount of time putting this together. But has that ever been reviewed by counsel to see if in fact it's-
Of course.
Okay, that was my question, cause that never came out.
We had to renew it, what, last year?
This, yeah, this year, actually.
This is a lawyer.
That's why we're bringing it up, this is what I'm talking about.
Yes, no, we just do again, yeah, it's coming here, we just didn't-
Exactly, it, it was annu- it was automatically renewed for-
It was, okay.
Yeah, there's an automatic renewal.
I know we spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, clause in the, in the lease. So you can see we have two different, not, I must-
I wanna go over and watch that.
That's, that's the dynamic, I think that's, that was-
It's a healthy dynamic.
Well, it is.
That was dinner table.
It's okay, as long as you can disagree without being disagreeable.
There was no food thrown at the table.
No. Well, that's no fun.
They're going to sauce rolls, it's got a hard roll.
Yeah, we're going to the hard, hard dinner roll.
So we could have a select board meeting where we invite people from the union school district board, to come and make their case.
And the administration.
And the administration, yeah. To try to do, maybe we'll do that after the holidays or-
Yeah, we don't need some, we got budgets to still finish before Christmas.
So, um, I just put this on for, like I said, the beginning discussion and I'm glad that we, we had it. And we'll continue to, to discuss this. And I guess, you know, we'll probably, from, I think, having a little bit more discussion, um, we can decide whether it should be worn down the-
Yeah, a little time to figure that out.
Yeah.
I would like to know what the catalyst of it is.
Right. So we should be, we should, it would be good to hear from the, the union district board, I think, the elementary school board. And I would say, if it's gonna take longer than, you know, your, the annual meeting or the vote or whatever, so be it.
Yeah, so be it, agreed. I don't see this need to rush, cause we had a pretty emphatic keep the building last time, so we're gonna change.
I don't think that's gonna change.
The voters definitely need to weigh in, it's not gonna be on my shoulders.
Okay, well, thanks for taking that into motion.
Sure.
So, next thing, I just wanted to, again, know-
We've got a pile of bills to, if you wanna do that.
Right, yeah.
So, Michael, did you bring the bids off?
Uh, for-
They're behind you.
It's for the audit, yeah. So, um, so we're gonna go back to the town committee report. As you probably all know, who have been coming to the meetings, the select board has been discussing whether or not to, to go to a professional audit. And we have in the past had town auditors that would do the audit. We're having a hard time filling that position. Um, we did, for this fiscal year, we did have two, um, two people that volunteered to do the fiscal year twenty-one audit, which is the fiscal year that we finished on June thirtieth of this past year. There are several towns that have had similar problems with getting enough people to be the town auditor, uh, those three positions.
If I-
So they have actually gone to having professional audits done, um, which come with a price. And we, we submitted, sent out an RFP and then within a date that we had posted for a deadline, we got one bid which based, one response that basically said that, uh, we're, we're not gonna consider your RFP. Since then, we have received two, um, two bids. Uh, one is from an outfit in Maine. Um, and I had, you know, I haven't read it thoroughly to know what they're proposing, but the price was seven thousand five hundred dollars. And then we have another, um, bid that we received from Sullivan Powers. They're based in Montpelier, they do a lot of town, um, and city audits. And that was twenty-three thousand dollars.
Say that again?
Twenty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars. I know what I mean.
For one year?
Okay.
For other, for one year or was it a locked in?
Where?
It was for one year.
Sodden, Long Road and Cal.
For one year.
Not your house.
And, you know, when we, we initially had looked into this a few years ago, um, and I know we, we contacted, the town of Woolcott has a, a yearly professional audit and it costs them around thirteen thousand dollars. Usually when, when you have a company that comes in and does a audit cold, um, there's a lot more work that needs to be done for that initial audit and then, you know, if they do it in successive years, um, and they've got different things in place, it's, it's much less time consuming. So, and what we had thought was to, again, this is a, a town meeting thing that we're thinking of is to bring, again, have this be something that would be worn for our town meeting agenda, um, again, for the town residents to, um, approve whether or not the town switches to a professional auditor. And I know our auditors in the past have kinda done, well, I would let, you know, Brandy, maybe you have a better, you know, okay. So it's, usually we're kind of, it's not, not the best scenario. So this is something that the select board has been discussing for a while. And, um, so you can, I don't, you know, we would have to look at these bid proposals a little bit closer to see what, like in this bid proposal, there was a cost proposal and then there was a technical audit proposal. So what they're basically doing is telling us what they would be doing, um, for the audit. So we'd have to kind of scrutinize the two that we've received. Chances are, there's much less that would be done from the group that's in Maine.
I would think dealing with all the grants and all that stuff, I would think you wanna go with someone professional.
It does sound, at this point, Brandy gets kind of right through the holes with the different grants and stuff that we're doing from the state.
So, if I, if I heard this correct, you got two, two bids, one seventy-five hundred?
That's the one out of Maine, so basically we'd be doing a lot of the scanning and sending it to them.
Right, and the other one is twenty-three thousand, correct?
Where they would come into house.
They would come in and actually work.
Okay.
And they're, based them up to there.
And, and you, I say you, the, the select board sent out guidelines? Cause when you have an audit, that audit is only as good as what's requested of the people doing the audit. So they both got the same documents.
Right.
I guess I, I, I still don't understand why such a spread.
Well, that's, we have, we have to look at what the work proposal is from, from these two bids to better understand that.
It's the detail, it's the, the, so I can have somebody look at NIMRAC and go, yeah, everything lines up, everything's there. But it's the paper trail. You have a company coming in from Sullivan, Sullivan, uh, Sullivan and Powers and like there's, you know, a journal entry missing or there's, you know, it, they're gonna go through it with a-
It's a, it's a, it's forensic.
Um, and that's the stuff I, I went to trainings, but we've never had an outside audit. Ever, ever in the town of Woodbury. We had a minimal audit that was just on certain areas before I came in for a reason.
Right.
Um, but there's never been, and, and that FEMA, that store, they're gonna come and ask me for an audit on that. And, yeah, I can show them like the books as far as in and outs, but there was a lot of transactions to do with that FEMA that I had no part in.
And sometimes, yeah, sometimes I-
It's just-
Go ahead, Brandy, sorry.
It'd be nice to have, even if it was once every three years.
No, I agree, yeah.
A thorough, start from somewhere, you know, but anyway.
And, and audit isn't always just about the, the ledgers and the, and the money. Sometime, you know, with the audits, these audit reports that I've sat through, they'll also sub- make suggestions on how you actually, yeah, keep the, keep the books, how you keep the records.
But it's not only mine, it would be delinquency that would be audited, it would be listers that would be audited. It's everything within that office.
The league doesn't offer small towns assistance with that?
Um, well, you know, maybe, maybe there is some kind of assistance that, um, can ask, but not that I'm aware of.
Not that they've been willing to offer up so far.
They haven't, yeah, they haven't.
I'm surprised that VLCT doesn't have a group that would love to do that.
Well, yeah, um, I mean, they, they do have a body of lawyers that are, work in a, as an advisory role to, to the municipalities.
But as far as accounting, they don't-
Not for this, not for the kind of accounting that we're-
Another question, is there a difference in cost being that you're not set up electronic? I mean, it takes some more time?
What do you mean?
Oh, to go digital?
Right, if you were digital, would that make a difference in the cost of audits?
Yes, cause there's always gonna be a paper trail. Uh, I do not scan in, yes, we have warrants that I print out from NIMRAC, but your select board orders are the original invoices, the original everything.
So if digital could save in the long run money for audits?
Select board orders wouldn't be digital. The only thing that would be digital is the property transfers, the land records, birth certificates, death certificates, all of the stuff that-
The rest of it would still have to be signed.
For research, but not the accounting part.
Okay.
So what branch of the town is the most complicated as far as an audit? Would it be the highway department, would it be?
It would be what I do and, yeah, it would be highway.
But it's all part, it's all different segments coming, coming to you.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
But all of them would be, so same with delinquencies, it comes to me-
It'll funnel to you.
To do the deposit. Um, but that's where the audit is gonna tell you, or the CPA firm is gonna say, well, no, you should be doing it this way. And until that system is set up and how they want it, that's why it's gonna be expensive the first year. It's just security for me, too, I mean-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean-
Well, the whole town, really.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, I've only been on the select board for a year and this is, this is the first conversation that we started having. We've been having it before this.
So when you, when you put this out, what were the guidelines, how far back are we going?
We wouldn't, it'd be going forward.
We'd be just from this point forward?
It's the best we can do for now.
And, and, and asking them, you know, we jumped in, you know, December saying, you know, cause we couldn't find auditors, we had no auditors.
No, I mean, that's been a problem.
And that's why the price, and it's, it's, yeah.
So this would be for fiscal year twenty-two, which is what we're in right now. We do, we have two town residents who are going to be the town auditors for fiscal year twenty-one. And, which is, you know, the, the year that we've just passed through. Actually, we're halfway through fiscal year twenty-two at this point. So this would be for an audit of fiscal year twenty-two. Sometime next summer or fall, I guess, whenever, so.
When you do that, is that gonna require a lot of overtime for the, for-
I have no idea.
Current staff?
I have no idea.
I don't think so.
I don't think, yeah.
No, we just step out of their way and they'll, everything's there, the binders are complete. I mean, it's the same thing I offer to the, our auditors. I mean, you can look at it, you can look at, you know, July through December or July through November right now. All of it's ready to be audited. We've never been ahead of the game.
No, it won't.
So they're auditing last year's for this town report, so.
So, you know, what we're thinking is to have, um, again, this on the town meeting warning for town residents to approve, um, a professional audit. The larger, you know, looking forward, you know, do we want the town, to approve having professional audit, for professional auditors to do the books for every year and, and let go of our, our town appointed auditors? That we have a hard time finding people to, to take those positions. So there's kind of two, two questions that are, um, you know, so I, I don't know whether, you know, we, we could, in the morning, we could, um, ask- so I, I don't know whether, you know, we, we could, in the morning, we could ask town residents if they would approve the town having the yearly audit done professionally? Or whether it would.
At more cost.
At more cost, yeah.
And, and that's, and, and again, you need to be transparent to, because you need to say that with the current structure, the way it is.
Right.
What it's costing the town for the quote-unquote auditors to do the audit.
It doesn't cost you anything.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't cost you anything.
There's no cost.
Just like it doesn't cost you to have a select board.
So what you're saying is?
Excuse me? Say that again?
No, we still pay, it's just very.
It's minimal.
It's very, it's not used, it's very light.
It's a minimal cost.
So John Reed right now, who's gonna be doing the whole town report and he's auditing all of my NIMRAC, he has access to full, everything, just looking, he's not charging the town.
Right.
So I have one auditor that will submit at the end of this fiscal year, but we're talking maybe a couple hundred bucks.
So what's the, I guess, what's the incentive to go?
What are they investing?
Yeah.
Um, people don't wanna do it. We had to beg these two to come back in to do it just for this year. But they don't want, it's.
And they don't do it every day, right?
Right, it's not their job.
So I mean, if you, it's like, it'd be like me, I don't know.
But you don't have the knowledge of that to look for.
So the select board's gonna make their determination on the seventy-five hundred to the twenty-three thousand?
No, the town is.
The town is.
So how do you vote on that?
It's gonna go, it's gonna be a warning whether the town wants to.
If you warn them at the town meeting, valid. So it'll be something that town residents vote.
So it'll be two articles, not one? How do you pick them?
Well, that's, that's the question, whether we wanna, I mean, there's two questions, whether we wanna pay, let's say, let's call it twenty, let's say, let's say we go with Sullivan Powers, so we would put twenty-three thousand dollars. Would the town approve the expenditure of twenty-three thousand dollars to have a professional audit of fiscal year twenty-two? That would be the one question.
Okay.
And we could also have the other question, does the town want to continue having the audit done professionally in, you know, going, going forward? And, and eliminate electing town auditors every year?
So the seventy-five, you're looking at us putting in a lot of time?
Because you gotta compare it instead of do it.
I have to scan it, I have to, and that's a lot gonna be asked out of us, delin, well, just us.
And, you know, this, this twenty-three thousand dollars, I am pretty certain, I know last time when we proposed this and sent out RFPs, it was for a three-year contract, I believe.
For eighteen, I think, around eighteen.
Yeah, so the first year, you know, was a little bit more, because there's a lot of groundwork coming into some, someplace cold. And then the successive years, it did go down some, not, not a lot, but some. You know, like Woolcott pays about, this was four or five years ago when I spoke to someone there.
For, for like thirteen.
Thirteen thousand dollars a year is what they budget for. And they have a professional audit done every, every year. So we could kind of look around and maybe find out what other towns pay. Sullivan, who they use, or who they use, yeah. I know that Sullivan Powers.
I was gonna say, I did that, but I don't think I have it with me.
Yeah, does a lot of different municipalities, that's.
Well, they've been around for a while.
They've been around for a while, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I'm sure in that quote they gave you, they're figuring, they never had a professional.
Exactly, oh, yeah. They know, yeah, that's quite, probably a little, you know, a little.
Yeah, I got that information at the office, because I've called around to other ones when we were talking about going off of this bit.
Right. Good, thank you for reminding me that we can do that.
That's gonna be a little bit challenging on your part on how you write that article up on each one of those two.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely get advice on how to word it properly, yeah.
Honestly, I don't think I ever even considered the, the name version, that that's gonna, it's gonna cut, you know, make these guys work a lot more, you gotta lose.
Right.
Overtime.
Yeah, I think, I think what we'll have on the warning is the amount that is in, is in this proposal.
That would be a great topic for that, that town caucus that we discussed.
Exactly, yeah.
That would be a, a primary, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything more about that? Any other questions? So again, yeah, so we'll kind of figure this one out and. So I know we've, we've kind of talked about this already, I put select board meetings on here again. And just mentioning that for future meetings here, because this is, this room is leased to the school and they pretty much have to say on how, we, you know, we get permission to use the room. And if they have a policy of asking people to wear masks, I think the select board will be requesting that in the future and I'll put, that'll be in the agenda.
Yeah, this one you warned, just make sure it says that.
Right. And, and again, you know, we talked about this also, we're, you know, we're working on some kind of hybrid meeting where people can attend in person or people can attend it remotely and try to figure that one out. We're, we're getting there, I think. And then I have an announcement for myself as a select board chair. I would like to step down as the chair as of this meeting. And then I also wanna announce that I have, after town meeting day this coming year, I have one more year to my three-year term, I'm, I'm not gonna fill that one year. So I just wanted to let people know that I'm, I'm on as a select board member until town meeting day, but I won't be finishing out my three-year term at all. I'm, it's been eight years now and I'm pretty tired of this job. It takes a lot of my time. I have things I need to do at home, working on my house, my wife reminds me of that pretty frequently.
Michael, thank you for your service, you've done a great job.
So this year when we, when we elect, we're gonna elect a three-year term and a one-year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So and I'm, I'm, you know, announcing this now so that the town has plenty of time to, to figure out who, who might wanna do that. And then I just have one update, that the hearing with the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board for the Northeast Wilderness Trust with the Woodbury Wilderness Preserve, NUT, pulled out of that hearing the day before the hearing happened. They were getting quite a bit of flak from some different state agencies with some, and I, I'm not gonna get into the details, but they just felt that it was better that they raised that one million dollars elsewhere. So, so they, that hearing, they were never present at that hearing, so there was no decision made by the Housing and Conservation Board on their application. So they are planning on proceeding with their, with the preserve. I believe the closing is sometime this week with the E.B. Hyde. And they'll pretty much, you know, be the owners of that property and they'll be free to set up however it's to be used by the public on their own terms. Yes, Jessica?
How are we staying as far as the current use?
Well, they have, they told us, they told us that, that the land would remain in current use as E.B. Hyde has had it, wherever, they, it's just a different category that they're able to use as a conservation.
Now, is that based off state or is it based off town?
The town has, the town has no say in current, current use program, it's a state program. It'll be the same, so we would be receiving the same amount of tax money on that property as we have been.
All right, can I, did you talk to anybody like Mike Covey or any of them guys from the foundation? You know, like the guys that, there was one of the guys that was here at the meeting? As far as what, what happened on the state level is our demands, I shouldn't say demands, our suggestions that we put on that, they looked at and said, absolutely not.
They, that's part of what they were, that they were encountering from A and R and from Fish and Wildlife, which is part of A and R. Yeah, but it kind of goes counter to what's happened in the state.
They just didn't wanna deal with it, they said, we're just gonna buy it and do our own, basically.
It's kind of a new thing, you know, for the state. There really isn't, there's one small wilderness preserve somewhere in the southern part of the state that the trust owns. But yeah, it's kind of a new, it's a new thing, so. And there were other issues too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
So who's the new chair?
Uh, well, one of them, one of them who was dealing with the fire, I guess we'll figure that out next time. Or maybe between here and next time.
Between here and next time.
Yeah. Any other business, anything that anybody wants to bring up? Quarter to nine, I'm ready to go home.
Right on time.
Uh, so a hair of mukchun that we adjourned.
Go ahead, Darren.
Michael.